Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this Monday, August 3rd, 2020, Meeting of the Bloomington City Council to Order. To start our meeting as we always do, if you could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Ms. Christensen, if you could please call the role of the council.
Sure thing, thank you. Councilmember Beluga?
Here.
Mayor Bossy?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Coulter?
Present.
Councilmember Loman?
Here.
Councilmember Martin?
I'm present.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Let the record show that all seven members of the Bloomington City Council are present and accounted for. Move on to item number four, our approval of our agenda. Council, unless there are any corrections or suggestions or changes, I'd look for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved, Martin?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin and the second by Councilmember Carter to approve tonight's agenda. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beluga?
Aye.
Mayor Bossy?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion to pass tonight's agenda passes 7-0. Thank you very much. On to item five, our introductory items. Item 5.1 tonight, as it has been since early March, is a COVID-19 organizational and public health update. We're joined again this evening by Dr. Nick Kelly from our Public Health Department. Good evening, Dr. Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. As of this afternoon, there are 1,158 confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Bloomington. We've lost 44 of our neighbors to this disease and 98 have been hospitalized. Over 50% of these cases are from the Black, Indigenous, and people of color community, while the American Community Survey estimates that 28% of Bloomington's population identifies as a member of the BIPOC community. This pandemic has cast a spotlight on the inequalities in housing, employment, poverty, and chronic disease as a result of structural racism. Our data regarding COVID-19 reflects this reality. Public health will continue to work with our other city partners and community partners to address these issues. Our ability to live with COVID-19 depends upon our ability to manage the risks associated with it at a population level. We need to become comfortable with being six feet from those outside of our immediate family. This is the most important thing we can be doing. I think we need to really focus on making sure that we're doing this well. There are aspects of our community right now that you can walk around in and not see people doing this. It's almost like a pandemic is not happening. We need to focus on limiting time in crowded places, confined and enclosed spaces with close contacts. Everyone should be using a face covering as a source control in indoor environments as directed by Executive Order 2081, and staying home when you're feeling unwell. This is part of that multi-layered level of public health actions that we have to manage COVID-19. We need to do better at dropping our daily case numbers. Last week, I talked about how we're 13 to 15 cases. We're at 12.4 cases for our seven-day rolling average. Our ability to lower this number is directly related to our ability to manage the risks of COVID-19 in our community. Last week, Minnesota released the Safe Learning Plan for the 2021, 2020, and 21 school year. This plan and the associated guidance is among the best guidance in the country. It provides, it prioritizes the safety of our students, teachers, and staff, and provides a strong foundation for decision-making. This guidance is rock solid from a public health standpoint. We continue to work closely with our partners in the Bloomington School District as we work to implement this guidance together. COVID-19 is changing many things, but it doesn't have to change how our community responds. Take care of each other. Everyone is being impacted by COVID-19, and many of our neighbors are being impacted in ways we might not be. The changes to income, routines with contact with others, and we know that this impact is not happening equally across our community. It is disproportionately impacting our BIPOC community. Look for ways to safely help your neighbors during this time. Our physical contact doesn't have to mean social isolation. We're going to get through this together. Our community is full of kind and helpful neighbors.
Once again this evening, thank you, Dr. Kelly. Council, any questions for Dr. Kelly? So we're hearing and we're seeing obviously a lot of attention on masking and face coverings over the past week or so, but as Dr. Kelly mentioned, the social distancing, the six feet between people, avoiding crowded areas, and keep washing your hands. Those things are all important parts of preventing the spread of COVID-19. So thank you for those reminders, Dr. Kelly. And I know, Dr. Kelly, you're going to head over virtually to help the school board with their discussion that they're having this evening about the school reopening here in Bloomington. Just want to pass on my best wishes to our colleagues over in the school board. They've got a tough decision and a tough few months ahead of them as we look to bring our students back to school here in the city of Bloomington. So best of luck to Superintendent Fujitaki and Board Chair Nellie Corman as you work through this. It's going to be a hard road, and we understand that, and we're here to support you in any way that we can. Councilmember Coulter, a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No question. I'm sorry, I was just slow to getting to raise my virtual hand, but I did just want to, to that point, I reached out to some school board members after the governor's announcement last week and was told several times just how valuable having our Public Health Department on hand to work through these decisions has been. So I just wanted to pass along that word and that personal thanks to our folks over at Public Health for the wonderful work they're doing.
Thank you. We'll pass that along.
Very good. Agreed. Any other comments for Dr. Kelly? If not, thank you once again, Dr. Kelly, and I'm sure we will talk to you again very soon. Thank you much. Let's move on to item 5.2 in our introductory items, which is an update on our Community Budget Advisory Committee. And co-chair Steve Peterson is here this evening to give us an update and to talk the council through the progress and where the Community Budget Advisory Committee is. There's Mr. Peterson. Good evening, Mr. Peterson. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Probably not a super-long presentation at that, but I do have one question at the end, and I think the city manager foreshadowed a little bit on that question last week in the meeting that I watched. So we're starting to pivot from kind of introductory materials to starting to review city budgets, and the first budget that we've been looking at has been the Internal Service Fund budget. We've also started to kind of make some preliminary decisions for the committee. Again, the two things that we have decided on so far is the reduction in the Norbert Dale Lake Tax Abatement District, which generates about $650,000 worth of savings in fiscal '21. And then continuing the savings, excuse me, not levying for savings for the value pool, that generates another $650,000 for fiscal '21. That particular decision effectively says that we're going to be in the position of needing to borrow for that pool vessel when we finally get to that point. Our thinking right now is that the remaining gap that we have, which is about, would be about four and a half million dollars, is going to be covered by a combination of levy and cost reductions. We're not going to be going and looking for fund balances in order to plug that. And the conversation that we've had around that has been that the, we want to save any remaining fund balances for addressing issues in the fiscal '22 budget. We've still got a substantial question mark over what the situation's going to be with respect to that budget, and we don't want to have the cupboard be completely empty at that point while we're discussing that. We've also discussed which of the revenue gaps would be eligible for financing. We believe for fiscal '21 that using financing to cover for delays in receiving tax collections is a reasonable approach to take. We know we'll get that money eventually for fiscal, for revenues generated in fiscal '21. And so we're looking toward recommending financing approaches for that. So the one, the one question that I came to the, that I wanted to present to the council tonight to get your feedback on, that we've started some preliminary discussions around what we might be doing in terms of recommending for the maximum levy. And if you remember, that's a recommendation that we're planning to come back to the council this month with. The question that we're thinking about is we're trying to decide what to set that maximum levy amount at. And one of the questions that we asked the staff to present on is, we asked them to answer the following question. If we kept department budgets the same, and from a staffing perspective, we didn't have any sort of cost of living increase other than ones that had already been negotiated in union contracts, what would the budget be like in that situation? And if we had a budget like that and we were going to levy for the entire gap, what would the levy be for that budget? And it turns out that if we take those parameters, which is effectively a flat budget, except for negotiated cost of living increases, and a levy increase to increase that, to bring that, generate enough revenue to pay for that, it's about a 10% levy increase if we go down that path. I just talked about two things that we've decided that each reduce that levy, maximum levy, by about 1%. So if we, if we end up coming out that we accept those two kind of shifts in order to pay for part of that, we'd have to set the maximum levy at 8% in order to be able to fund a budget at that level. And the question I have for the council is whether the council wants to receive that as one of the three funding options. And the reason I'm asking the question is that, at least preliminarily, the sense that I have from the committee is left to our own devices, we might come in slightly lower than that 8% number for fiscal '21. And I wanted to get the council's feedback on that, because if that was an option that you wanted to have come back to the council, now's the time for us to talk about that while we're formulating our preliminary levy recommendation. So with that, I will accept any questions on that or any of the other items that I present here.
Council, we talked about some of these questions last week. We kind of teed things up, and now as Mr. Peterson kind of framed it up a little bit more, opened it up to discussion. I see Councilmember Beluga and then Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Steve. Thanks for your work and to the others on the project. I'm having a hard time grasping that with a flat budget for expenditures, other than whatever salary adjustments would be called for under contracts, which is about 25% of the labor force of the city, that we get to an 8% required levy to satisfy that need. And I get to that by just looking back at last year, when I think we had between a 3% and 3.5% wage increase and about 4.5 or so percent levy increase. So I'm having a hard time working through the numbers. So can you take us through that?
Sure. It's actually, it's actually really straightforward. If you look at the revenues related to primarily to the lodging taxes, that's where the difference is in the budget. There's some other places that I would say are minor differences, but the vast majority of the difference in the budget is related to lodging revenue forecasts for fiscal '21 versus what we expected to have for, what we received in '19 or what we expected in '20.
Got it. I thought you were just talking about the need for covering expenses. I didn't hear that, plus the revenue shortfall.
Yeah, so the staff has done a really good job of supporting the committee in producing a revenue model. And if you look at the areas where we have kind of flexibility to bring cash into the budget for fiscal '21, there's really a couple of choices. We can go and do kind of sharp pencil examinations of reserve funds and see if we can identify cash in reserve funds that we can bring out of the reserve fund into the '21 budget. Those were the two things that I talked about that the committee seems to have consensus around so far. And then if you're going to keep the, you're going to keep the expense side flat, subject to the parameters that we've talked about already, really only option at that is to collect more property tax revenue to be able to cover that. And so that's really, that's what we're, that's really the question that we're asking is, do we want to have a conversation about a budget like that? Or should our, because I think without, without that feedback from the council tonight, I suspect the committee will shoot a little bit lower than that 2% number when they make its recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up question?
Please, go ahead.
Steve, there's a delinquency amount of about $5 to $6 million of 2020 real estate taxes anticipated. And how did you or the committee plan on the receipt of that in the going-forward basis?
So that's a, that's a good question. The, with respect to delinquencies for property taxes levied this year and for delinquencies for property taxes levied next year, because both of those are dependent on valuations that were made prior to the pandemic. In other words, for property taxes next year, that's the valuation that occurred on January 1st of this year. We think that it's based on the information that we got from the staff that it's highly likely that we'll eventually collect that revenue. And so we felt that it was reasonable through, probably on a first-cut basis, using interfund loans to pay for financing that, with interest rates as low as what they are right now, that that would be a reasonable path to take, given that the likelihood of collecting that revenue eventually is very, very high. If we were having a conversation about the fiscal '22 budget, the budget that that's a year and a half from now, that's dependent on the valuation for, that occurs at the end of this calendar, the one that's the January 2nd, 2021 valuation. And that one, and we haven't talked about that a lot at the committee, but my feeling is that particular valuation is going to be, particularly for large commercial properties, is going to be subject to a lot of negotiation and litigation around property values. And I think that we won't know with the same degree of certainty what we're going to collect on that levy until a couple of years pass after that. So I think, I think your point about kind of financing and collectability and how we're going to pay for that, I'm particularly concerned about the fiscal '22 levy with regard to that, not the fiscal '21.
Oh, let some of my colleagues ask their questions. Thanks, Steve.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Chair Peterson, for your work as well. I guess this is more just to kind of refresh my memory. Staff had brought up, I think it was at our last study session or maybe our last meeting, there was a potential that unallocated CARES funding that the city hasn't spent on any particular purposes yet might be able to backfill lost revenues at some point, maybe through additional congressional action. Have we heard anything else on that front, or is that still up in the air?
Jamie, do you want to comment on that one? That's a kind of legislative.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Martin, and thank you, Chair Peterson. That is language that's included in the Senate proposal that they're negotiating right now for the next iteration of stimulus money from the federal government. And until the House and the Senate come to some agreement on what that package is, we won't truly know. The issue with the, with the state and local government assistance is that the House has, included in their bill, a substantial amount of financial assistance for state and local governments. The Senate includes no money for state and local, but does provide additional flexibility on the original allocation approved in late March. So if, if the negotiated outcome is that there's additional flexibility, we have about $2.5 million of unallocated CARES funding that we could utilize to offset the revenue loss for either this year or next year.
Gotcha. Thank you both.
And so just a little bit of follow-up on that is that generally, the committee has taken the approach that we are not going to either come up with ideas that require legislation or assume that some proposed legislations can be passed in order to kind of put things together. With respect to both the kind of revenue and the expense side of the budget, you know, we do have to set the maximum levy shortly here, but if we look forward to later in the fall, in the November timeframe, that's really the point at which the budget has to come together completely. And we ought to know what Congress intends to do with respect to that money at that point. If that comes into scope, then I think we'll end up having a conversation about that, because there's a, there's a policy question, you know, the council could, for example, the council could say, "We're going to use all of that for fiscal '21. We could decide to use some of it for fiscal '22." There's a bunch of questions I think that we're going to have to answer together to decide if that money arrives, how it's going to be put to work. Or there may be other incremental spending things, because I've, in watching meetings, I've seen that you've been discussing other things that that might be allocated to. I think there's a policy question that, that probably originates at the council. Would that entire amount be available to the committee to include in the budget, or would some of it be allocated on the unit?
Anything else, Councilmember Martin?
No, that's great. Thanks for the additional context.
See, Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Nelson, and then Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Peterson, for all of the work that you're doing to help us out here. So I guess I have a question that's in a similar vein. Since my time on council, we've gotten the results for a couple of service assessments, including Public Works and Fire. And I guess, so maybe this is also a question for Mr. Brugge, but what's the timeline on taking action on those service assessments and the recommendations, especially related to some of the things that we can do to save on some of the expenses? And could those be applied to 2021? And again, kind of in a similar vein, I know some of these things might be considered more as we get closer toward the end of the year, the fall, but I'm kind of wondering where that fits into all of this.
Mr. Brugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Carter, with the service assessments, most of those reports, when they come to council, have a series of recommendations that council has typically endorsed that we begin implementing right away. As an example, with the fire service assessment, one of the most significant findings had to do with our inventory of apparatus. And by looking into the next couple of years and our large equipment purchases, seeing that there were a couple of ladder units that we don't need is going to save close to $2.5 to $3 million just for those two pieces of equipment in the next couple of years. So those types of recommendations have already been incorporated into our models. Those are funded through our internal service funds that the committee looked at last week, and so a lot of that is already being factored in through the service assessments. So the, the ones that we still have active right now, the dispatch service assessment is close to being wrapped up. And then we had the motor vehicle service assessment that was getting started and has been thrown off, obviously, by our current circumstance. So that's, that's another issue that will have to get resolved during the conversations over the next several months. Does that sufficiently answer the question, Councilmember Carter?
Yep, super helpful. Thank you. I have no other questions at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Peterson, for your work and the work of the committee. I know you guys have been working hard on this. Just a couple of quick questions. I'm wondering if the committee has taken a position on delaying of items like maintenance, repair, capital expenditures, equipment, and things like that, to push those off until such time as some of the revenues from our liquor and hospitality are starting to flow back in? And what impact that those, I guess, delayed expenditures could have on our budget in the next year?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, with respect to capital expenditures, we've touched on that a little bit, and that's a, that's a surprisingly nuanced question, because at a time when, if it's something that you know you're going to buy, at a time when interest rates are historic lows and looking ahead to next year's construction season, you know, there's some indications that with respect to kind of larger commercial construction, that it's going to be a good time to be a purchaser of it. You, you want to think about that in terms of kind of the long-term impact. And with respect to capital expenditures, you know, trying to set them up for the long term is probably, you know, personally, if what I was going to go, go end up doing there, and we've talked about that some at the committee. With respect to delaying expenditures, I think that where that will end up getting captured is in the expense reduction proposals that the individual departments make. So our intention there is that we are, want to get on a trajectory where we get proposals from departments that are well beyond what's necessary in order to be able to achieve the kind of combination of spending and revenue goals that we end up creating. And it's going to be up to the committee to kind of help form those and then select among the different choices in terms of what we're going to end up doing. So if a particular department, and the Public Works Department is the department that controls the largest amount of capital assets in the city, you know, it may come forward with proposals on delaying kind of maintenance expenditures. You captured one of those this year when you decided not to do the seal coating project this year. And as we all know, that's the sort of thing where maybe one or two years you can get by with it, but if you wait on that for too long, it's basically spending money in future years in order to be able to kind of save money now. And with the cities, you know, the city continues to have a really, really, really strong fundamental financial situation. And so the committee at least seems to be very interested in making decisions that are the right ones long-term for the city's finances and not doing stopgap things that end up fixing the problem next year and arguably fixing the problem the year after that, too, but create big fiscal impacts in future years. So that, that's the balance that we're trying to strike.
Thank you for the thorough explanation. That makes sense. Just one follow-up question related to what you said about financing for some of the gaps. When you look at that maintenance, repair, some of those things that maybe we tend to pay out of current income streams or revenue streams, would it be possible, or just as an idea, to look at maybe bonding for a few more of those to help the current-year budgets and spread those costs out into those future years when revenues come back? I think you'll probably end up looking at that, but just an idea there, because I agree with you that if the costs are such that things are lower and less expensive now and borrowing costs are low, it may be the time to continue with those, but not have to pay for them in their entirety in 2021.
Yeah, I think that's, that's definitely an option that the committee would consider.
Okay. Um, uh, will you also look at fee structures for various programs and things like that within the community? I know recently when we looked at some of the financial information, some cities generated more revenues than Bloomington based on fee structures and um, other costs for services and things like that. Um, is that something that the committee will be looking at as well?
We did have a conversation in a fair amount of depth around fees, and there were basically, fees kind of fell into two categories. There were, I guess what I call development fees, which are things that would be primarily in the community development department. Those fees are largely capped by state law in terms of cost recovery. So that's not, that, that's not something that's subject to us setting a different price and generating more revenue from it, except to the extent that we're undercharging on things. And so that's one thing, if the staff felt that there was a particular kind of development permit that we were undercharging on, and they had a study to support it, we could certainly consider a change in that fee. The other form of fees are what I would call from the city's, uh, business-type activities, particularly kind of park and rec activity fees. And the way it was explained to us is that those fees are set on a marketplace basis where they go and they compare pricing with other cities because those are, those are really kind of quasi-business activities of the city. And we have to, we don't have a particular monopoly on those sorts of businesses, and so those prices have to be competitive with other cities. Maybe the city manager has more to add on that, but it didn't, it didn't feel to the committee like there was a lot of opportunity in their, in those sorts of fees to, to make a big difference in the budget. And so we didn't dive into that in a great detail.
Great. Thank you for that answer. Um, last question I think I have right now is, um, you're, you're asking kind of for the top-end, um, budget, but I, I assume you're still planning to bring back, uh, three or four scenarios where there are not, uh, holding expenses level, but where there will be expense reductions and trying to really drive that levy rate, uh, down lower. So I, I am very concerned particularly for some of the, um, owners, uh, and renters of our lower properties that have had frankly their values going up, so they're getting, uh, hit by increases in taxes already. And, and in many cases, they're probably in the, um, situation that it's least affordable for them, probably most impacted by what's going on in the economy. And so I'm very sensitive to this levy this time. And so I just wanted to ask, if the plan is still to bring back multiple scenarios and just show us, you know, which pain we want to endure, the, the cut pain, and, and how do we balance those?
Yeah, that's exactly right, Councilmember Nelson. So the, the question for tonight that I'm looking for feedback on, and thank you for, for, um, kind of bringing it up is just purely around the maximum levy recommendation and whether that, it's not really, it's, the question isn't really, do you want an eight percent maximum levy? The question is, do you want a budget that comes back that has zero, basically from a level city budget? That's really the question that we're asking. Because if, absent, absent that feedback, you'll probably get three budgets that are all varying levels of cuts from the current spending level of the city.
Just from my perspective, I, I hi- I highly doubt that I would favor the one that had no cuts to it. But, um, I do think as a baseline, it is an interesting thing to look at and will help people understand the budgeting that we're doing. Um, again, just with the caveat that I don't think that's the one that I would ultimately support or think should move forward, um, given the concerns I've already raised. But, um, I guess that's where I'd stand on your question.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so since it, since councilmember just, councilmember Nelson just brought this up, I'm going to start with that, with that question. And you know, I guess from my perspective, I've always thought of, you know, when we talk about the levy, sort of what happens if we don't do anything, right? Like as, as you say, if we just kind of leave things as they are, cost of living adjustments negotiated from contracts, that kind of thing, what's, if we just leave things as they are, what does that levy look like? And that was that eight percent that you referenced. So, you know, from my perspective, you know, I, I guess I, I see this as, as that's still an option, whether or not you bring that forward as an option anyway. So I guess my, you know, my preference would be, um, to sort of look at, at other options beyond that, other options below, I should say, below that, not beyond that, um, choosing my words carefully here. Um, so I, you know, I, I think we, it, it sort of exists in, in what researchers would call the null hypothesis, right? That's what happens if, if nothing changes. So I don't know that I feel the need to, to know a lot more about what that option would look like, because I think we already have a pretty good idea. Um, and then the, the question I had, um, you, you say in your memo here, um, that there are listening sessions scheduled for September seventeenth and September nineteenth. And I'm wondering, and maybe you haven't discussed this too in depth, um, but I'm wondering if you could tell me sort of what, what initial thoughts have been on what those look like, what kind of, I mean, what kind of feedback will you be soliciting? What, what, essentially, what are you going to be listening to and for?
I think, I think, and thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Coulter. Um, the, the primary kind of act behind those so far has been kind of save the date because it's six, it's six weeks out. And I think we're, we're still having a conversation with the staff about precisely the form that those listening sessions end up taking. Uh, so if, um, you know, and we're, we're happy to receive input on that from people and what they think could be most effective. I think that, you know, in particular, you know, one of the things that we talked about is, you know, if we do a WebEx or a Zoom or a Teams meeting and, you know, what does that do, for example, for people who don't have computers or older folks who have trouble with technology? I know, you know, if I was going to get my parents to go to that, I'd have to go over and push the button on the iPad in order to get them to be able to go do it. Um, so trying to figure out a way to get that sort of feedback, and we may have to fall back on for some, for reaching some of the communities is just driving awareness and using the old-fashioned kind of email or letter approach to getting feedback or, you know, or, or phone calls to people because that's the technology that people have available. So I think big picture, we, we believe strongly that kind of meeting people where they're at is an important thing as part of that outreach.
Um, thank you. And, and I would just say that, that when you're back for your September update, I hope, I hope we'll know a little bit more about what that, what that will look like and, and have more proper feedback on at that time.
Should have it fully worked out by then.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, former councilmember, uh, Peterson, um, uh, I guess I, I, I like your question. And, uh, one of the things that occurs to me as I think about the question, uh, that you raised is when we look at the first year and we look at the second year, if you take those as two budget years, I would imagine, as we've seen over several years here, where changes that you make in the first year have an impact on that second year. Uh, and so, um, you know, certainly, uh, I'd like to see that number come in a lot lower than, than, than the eight percent baseline. And I, I would say that in my personal opinion, I think that we ought to use that as a baseline and then come back with, you know, two or three other scenarios. Um, but a big impact to me would, would be what is going to happen in that, that second year. So, um, as a part of that charter, are we looking at that second year, um, as we get ready to, you know, to, to make that recommendation on, on the, on the first year? Is that going to be part of the, that comes back to us, or is that just, you know, advisory?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Lohman, we've, we've had some preliminary discussions about what would end up happening with the fiscal twenty-two budget with respect to revenue. But the information that we've had from the staff is necessarily preliminary because we're not, we're not at the point yet where they believe that they can produce a, a forecast, you know, at a, at a level of accuracy related to that. We expect to get more information around that in the, uh, information that we get as we get farther into the year. But one of the things that we are trying to be sensitive to is making sure that we don't leave us in a situation where we use up all the easy stuff in twenty-one, and then twenty-two is a giant valley that has to be filled with no options. So I think we're, we're, we're trying to look at that with the data as best we have it.
So I guess, you know, I mean, and I'm not sure, I know that each time that we've looked at the, the budget from a, from a council perspective, we've gotten that, you know, here's the first year, and here's the second year, and here's, you know, here's a projected level as we kind of get to that standpoint where we get rid of that, that, that primary. So I guess what I would say is that I, I can't imagine us, you know, doing that, an eight percent. You know, when, given the last several years we've done, you know, the tops has been around four. Um, so I just, I can't imagine a scenario where we would come back with eight, especially with how our, our entire tax base is, is stressed at this point, um, that that would just, uh, be a very difficult thing to do. On the other hand, I know there, there are important services that we provide, uh, to that entire tax base too that has an impact as well. Um, so, um, my personal preference, not having seen, you know, both, you know, um, lined up, uh, together. Uh, because I know that in that third out year, there's going to be an impact as well, which there's no way to get a forecast for that. That's just too difficult to do. So my recommendation would be try to use that, that, that eight percent as a baseline, as, as councilmember Nelson has talked about, and then really try to come back. Um, I would like to see some divergent, divergence, you know, and differences, you know, in the three different scenarios. So you're not seeing a, you know, a six, a five, or four, maybe, you know, what's a zero look like, you know, here's the absolute, you know, and then something in, in the midpoint in that, and then, you know, something that's closer maybe to that, to that eight. I just, I can't imagine that coming back with an eight, um, would be, would be good for our taxpayers, and that might, I, I just, I just can't see that, that scenario being anything. So I guess the tops I would look at is probably the four point five, um, at, at the very highest. I, I just can't see a scenario where we come in any higher than that, uh, uh, from a taxpayer standpoint. But, uh, ma- maybe you guys can come up with something that would, that makes sense. But I, I just, I cannot see anything that would be much higher than that. But, uh, maybe there's some things I'm not looking at, I'm not seeing. But, uh, I think it's, you know, probably four point five, you know, maybe two, then zero. Um, those, those are the three that I, I'm thinking of in my head, and I don't know what the impact is that, you know, if, if we were to do that. So that, that's sort of where I, where I'm, in my head, where I'm at. Um, certainly coming in a little bit, you know, above that wouldn't be, be big, but I don't think we've, we've ever seen anything like this. So maybe it makes some sense to come in a little higher and then, then tailor that number down. But I, I can't imagine we're going to come in any higher than where we're at right now.
You know, I, I think, I think, you know, we're, we're paying attention to those out years. And one, one thing that we've talked about at the committee, um, and that I talked about when this process first started is I think it's important for us to try to run a process where there's basically one set of cuts if we end up making cuts. And that we don't want to have a situation where every six months, we're having to go back to the well and get departments to give up more because just from a kind of organizational health perspective, it doesn't work that way. Um, you, you want to go through this process, you want to go through it once, and then you want to be in a position where organizationally, um, in twenty-two, maybe you're level, and then you're kind of growing out of your current position. And so uh, necessarily predicting what's going to happen in twenty-two is a tough sort of thing. But one of my personal goals is to try to offer you some options that, that allow that to occur so that the, um, organization in twenty-one represents kind of the organization structure that, that makes sense for the next couple of years. And if the, there's surprises in the budget, the surprises are going to more than likely fall on the the happy side of the, the budget ledger as opposed to the, the additional pain side.
And I assume with you saying that, that you will also take into account, this just kind of goes without saying, that we've had a lot of positive uh, variance because of our, our standpoint of our fiscal conservativeness with our, uh, you know, with our planning. And I, I imagine we'll take that into account. I know that's important to have some buffer there as we, as we look to, to, to make the out years. But I appreciate your, uh, your philosophy with that and, uh, good luck. Thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing those scenarios when they come out.
Thank you.
Do we jump back in here now? Councilmember Carter and Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, um, I'm probably going to be kind of sharing some sentiments that other councilmembers have shared. Um, but first I really appreciate the work that you've done to, to show us, you know, what a do-nothing scenario would be at this eight percent. I appreciate you coming into the meeting and already have that clearly outlined for us. And so, you know, for me, you know, absolutely, um, aware of the very obvious economic challenges that are facing many of our residents right now. And, um, but also, you know, understanding, and we've heard from a lot of residents this year when we've had conversations around cutting certain services, or when we have had to cut certain services, like childcare, summer childcare, for example, you know, where people are, um, you know, really upset by it. And so, uh, these decisions are very hard. And from my perspective, I think starting at that do-nothing kind of baseline at eight percent is kind of the upper limit. And then, um, you know, obviously staying under that and giving us a variety of scenarios. So, um, that's my input. Thank you.
Councilmember Beloga?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, uh, back in, uh, the great recession, and you were on council at that time. I recall we had, uh, three years of zero levy increase, three consecutive years. And, um, I, I think there were some techs, uh, techniques that were employed, uh, to achieve that, obviously. And I'm wondering, uh, how far have we, uh, looked into those, uh, or application into this set of circumstances?
So here, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Beloga. You're, you're testing my memory here on precisely how the budget mechanics worked in those three years. And so I'd have to, to be honest, I'd have to go work with the staff to kind of go back and answer kind of what were the things in order that made, that made that happen. I, I suspect that one thing that we'll find is that we didn't have as big a decline in hospitality revenue in that period, so that the, the hole wasn't quite as big, um, from a, as a, on a percentage basis. I'm also going to just guess, and this is off the top of the head guessing, so it could easily be contradicted, contradicted by real data. I suspect that the hospitality business was not as big a percentage of the total city budget at that point as it is today. But I suspect that there, those, maybe two of the factors that accounted for some of the differences in how we're able to handle it now versus then. But we can get you that answer. I just don't have it off the top of my head.
And, and that's good. Um, and, uh, from my perspective, and I think what you're looking for is, is, you know, all the council feels about, uh, uh, the zero to eight kind of number. And, uh, I'll just harken back to last December when we had, uh, the final budget levy. And we had person after person after person, uh, state that this was, uh, what at, uh, you know, roughly a four percent increase was a crushing item to them. Many of those people who came were, uh, people on fixed income, they were seniors. And they were, uh, mentioning that, uh, uh, you know, their, their income was going up at the rate of one point eight percent. Yet, uh, their burdens were going up at far higher percentages, whether it be real estate tax, uh, gas, electric, so, uh, food, medical costs. So, uh, want to be very sensitive to that because as it's been previously mentioned, at, uh, the kind of unemployment rate that we've had, uh, and are enduring right now, uh, there's so many people who are hurting. So I feel we need to do all that we can to, uh, be fiscally responsible, yet to also minimize the, uh, impacts of this world. So, thank you.
Uh, Mayor and Councilmember Beloga, you know, I, I think I, I hear that. And I, one thing that, that we're pretty much guaranteed is I think we're pretty much guaranteed to, um, deliver a long line of people wanting to testify on our final proposal with the council. And so that's, maybe I could put that as a fourth deliverable that I'm, that, that will deliver on that as well. But, you know, the, I, you know, I've, I've had people come up to me and, and, and they'll say, what's the big deal? You know, if, if the, we're talking eight percent on the median value of a house, that's ninety-six dollars a year. Um, and what, what, what's the big problem with ninety-six dollars a year? And I think Councilmember Beloga and, um, you know, others have talked about, there's a lot of people where ninety-six dollars a year is a big deal. And that's just our little slice of a third of the property taxes, and it doesn't include Comcast going up and their mobile phone going up and the grocery store and things like that. Um, and so, um, I, I, we, we have to really be, uh, thinking carefully about the people in our community who are on fixed incomes, who are on social security. Maybe they're getting two thousand something in social security a, a month. A hundred bucks in our slice is a pretty big deal to somebody like. A hundred bucks in our slice is a pretty big deal to somebody like that, you know? Maybe it's birthday presents, who knows what it is. And we gotta, we gotta be, you know, keeping those folks in mind as we're making decisions here.
Indeed. Thank you.
Anybody else, counsel? Well, Chair Peterson, I would agree completely with your last statement there. And Councilmember Beloga, appreciate your comments that you made also. Your, your question about the somewhere between zero and eight percent. I think the answer there is yes, somewhere between zero and eight percent. I, I would agree with the fact that eight percent I think would be tone deaf in terms of what we're looking to accomplish. To try and, to, to try and find this balance of, of the, the services provided versus the cost to the residents. And, and so we've got to be careful of that. On the other end, a, a zero percent would, would result in more than a $5 million cut in the city services. And we have to just assume that that would in some ways dig into or eliminate services that people use across this community. And, and the same people that we're trying to save money for would be directly and negatively impacted by budget cuts to that level. And I would agree with folks that, as I said, yes, the, the number is somewhere between zero and, and eight percent. And actually it's the original number of 10%, which frankly is, was surprising to me to hear that simply by having the, the, a flat budget and just the contracts and, and the salaries. We're looking at, that, that would result in a 10% levy increase, which is a, which is a surprise. And, and I want to make it clear to people, that isn't a 10% budget increase, that's a 10% levy increase. Those are two different things, but it's still would, would, would maintaining the same services that we provided this year into next year would be, would require a 10% increase in a levy. And, and I think, given the realities of today, given the realities of people's job situation, their life situations, we can't ask that level of 10 or 8% of them. But on the other end, we can't ask of a, for a $5 million reduction in the services in this city that I think people come, have come to rely on in so many different ways. And what make this the community that it is. So echo the, echo Councilmember Lohman and wish you luck and, and tell you, I look forward to hearing from you again and hearing from your committee. And if you could please pass on to your committee, our thanks and our appreciation for the work that they've put in. I know that they've put in a lot of hours. And we've got a lot of folks who are working very hard on this and who are doing outstanding work. I don't know, counsel, if you've taken the time to, to watch and, and tune into the Community Budget Advisory Committee. But it is, it's rigorous work and it's, it's thoughtful conversation by some pretty sharp people in this community who've got, who've got other things to do with their lives on a beautiful summer evening, but they're here helping us to work through this. And so we're in a debt of gratitude and a, and a big, great deal of thanks. So are there any additional questions for Vice Chair Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the kind words.
Very good. And thank you. And again, please pass along our thanks to, to the rest of your committee as well and look forward to seeing you again very soon. Thank you much.
Bye now.
So Mr. Verugi, next steps, if you could remind me again, I think we laid it out at our last council meeting. But if you could remind us if you have that at your fingertips. And you don't, that's fine.
The schedule for the Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members. We have a study session that is focused exclusively on budget issues or mostly on budget issues. I won't say exclusively, we may have something sneak in there for August 31st. So the committee has a couple more meetings yet this month. And we'll be drafting their recommendation on the preliminary levy. It'll come for conversation on the 31st and then for action in the middle of September.
Very good. Thank you. Counsel, any final thoughts or questions on that? No, let's move on to item six, our consent business. And Councilmember Coulter has our consent agenda this evening. Councilmember Coulter?
I do indeed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to put out one last call for hold. I didn't hear anything from anybody. I just want to confirm, I'm not seeing anybody.
Councilmember Lohman and Councilmember Beloga, hands are up. Councilmember Beloga, did yours just not go down? I saw Councilmember Lohman's go up. Councilmember Lohman?
Yeah, just real quick, I wanted to, I don't necessarily need to, to hold 6.3. Just really a question for the mayor and for the city manager, just on public hearings. And, you know, why certain items are, and certainly there's other items on this consent agenda. Why, some folks have asked, why not a, a public hearing on some of these items that are on there? We don't need necessarily answer that. Now we can answer it during policy, but wanted to just throw that question out there for you guys.
And we will bring that up in our, our policy and issues update at the end. But I, I mean, I think the teaser is that a 5-0 vote by the, by the Planning Commission generally brings things to our consent agenda as opposed to a public hearing here at the council. And this was a unanimous vote of the, of the Planning Commission. And there, there, there was a public hearing there, an extensive public hearing there.
All right.
Councilmember Coulter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seeing no one else, then there are no holds, so I remove the entirety of the consent agenda. Items 6.1 through 6.10.
Second, Councilmember Lohman.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter and a second by Councilmember Lohman to adopt our consent agenda as stated. Counsel, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen, please.
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. We move on to item seven, our public comment period. And item 7.1 on our public comment period is a response to our prior meeting's public comments. Mr. Verugi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. We had a number of residents that spoke to the council at our meeting last Monday. I'll walk through a couple of them and then I'll save for last the, the lengthiest response. Elizabeth Longo had concerns about the contract with the county for temporary housing for people experiencing housing instability and also needing mental health services. And asking if the council needed to vote to rezone those properties and what the process was there. The county does have contracts with a couple of hotels within the city of Bloomington where they are providing temporary shelter. And that's anticipated to continue at some level during the pandemic. We are working with the county to look at their options. Is, our understanding is they're trying to find something that is going to operate more successfully and trying to plan for a longer period of time. This, this approach they're working with right now was an immediate and anticipated to be a short-term reaction. So they're trying to plan for a little bit longer term and our staff is continuing to work with the county on that. There was an additional question by Michelle Justin asking about the costs for Bloomington related to those services being provided by Hennepin County. And I would say that the, the costs are, to the city are no direct costs. We do have public safety costs. We're seeing an increased number of calls for service, not just at the sites that are contracted by the county, but a number of our hotel properties where we have several different issues that are happening. One is a number of our hoteliers are reducing their rates pretty, pretty substantially to try and bring more business into the properties. And the others that some of the hotels have contracts with other social service providers. Some are nonprofits, some are churches. And we've seen an increase in calls for service for public safety at many of those properties. That's the, the most direct cost. I don't have a, a number that's assigned to that. It's just recognizing that our police department and our fire department are busier when it comes to those properties than they have been. We also do see a, what I would refer to as an opportunity cost there. That's actually the, the loss of revenue when there are contracts for those facilities that extend for more than 30 days. The, the revenue related to those rooms does not produce lodging tax. So again, it's just continuing what, what we've been seeing over the last number of months is that our, our lodging tax receipts continue to drag behind. We're looking at right now occupancy in the neighborhood of about 35%, which is better than I think some of us were thinking we'd be at right now. And it's actually right in the middle for the council members who've been tracking these forecasts. It's right in the middle of our different scenarios. So we're, we're doing okay there. There was a concern about the, excuse me, I lost track of where I was at here. Concern about one of the items on the consent agenda tonight. So the council dealt with the Success Academy application through the consent agenda. And then the, the last item I wanted to respond to comes from Andrew Thule. And Mr. Thule had a specific request through the council to the city manager about what the city is doing to improve communications with residents. So what I thought I would do, Mr. Mayor and council members, and I, I think it's good for the community to hear this. It's good for the council to be updated on this is walk through all the different ways that we communicate with our residents. Because frankly, it is a very full and robust approach to making sure we're not just communicating, but we're also doing outreach and engagement with our community. So in the area of print communication, the council back in 2018 made a decision to go from a bi-monthly briefing. That's our city newsletter that goes out to the community and made a decision to deliver that monthly. That goes to approximately 38,000 households and 5,000 businesses. And we know people read it. In addition to the resident feedback and the compliments regarding newsletter, when our residents are asked how they get their information from the city in our national citizen survey that we do every year, 86% of respondents called the briefing a common source of information, which ranks the highest in the category of where our residents get their information, above the Sun Current, above the Star Tribune. So people see a lot of value in the information and that's why the council made that decision to increase the frequency two years ago. It's frankly, one of the most popular services that the city provides. The city has a notable online presence and uses these tools to engage users and provide timely, important local information, news of interest. So this includes providing content for a website that sees more than 420,000 page views per month. More than 20 social media accounts, including Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, Instagram, Nextdoor. We have thousands of followers across those social media platforms. Just this year alone, the city has posted 385 times to Facebook, sent over 260 tweets and posted 80 news items on Nextdoor. An email subscription service that we call e-subscribe has 29,000 subscribers who've signed up to receive email information from the city with alerts on over 100 different topics. And so far this year, we've sent 375 different email messages through our e-subscribe service. In the area of video and cable TV, the city, the city produces videos and news shows for cable television with a potential audience of up to 20,000 cable subscribers and thousands more on social media. To improve communication, provide a recap of council activities. The Council Minute featuring the mayor was launched this year. So far, 21 episodes have been produced and cable cast on cable TV three times a day each week and posted to social media on a weekly basis. The city has attracted close to 5,000 YouTube subscribers who sign up to receive the city videos and news program Bloomington Today. This year to date, staff has produced 139 videos for YouTube and cable television. Of those videos, 78 were posted to Facebook. I think it's important to note that our communications staff is about the best in the business for city government here in the state of Minnesota, recognized by both the residents and our peer organizations locally and around the country. They continuously, our residents continuously offer words of praise for, for the city publications. And our communications divisions received nearly 20 national and local awards in the last two years alone for producing high-quality, engaging content for the community. In terms of outreach and engagement, so that's just like the one-way communication, Mr. Mayor and council members. When it comes to outreach and engagement events, we've had 13 events so far this year. And that is recognizing that we're really handicapped by the fact that the pandemic has limited just about all of our in-person opportunity. And so we're, we're having to do a lot more with WebEx. And as a matter of fact, we just approved Zoom. This may sound like we're behind the times, but when we started utilizing virtual meeting systems, we made a decision to use WebEx rather than Zoom. Through the course of the pandemic, what we found out is that many of the groups that we're trying to reach utilize Zoom much more than WebEx. And so we actually authorized utilizing Zoom as an outreach and engagement tool specifically and have just launched our Zoom for engagement. But those 13 events, coffee with the cop several times, community conversations with the police department, the Lyndale Avenue Design Workshop, Richfield Bloomington Watershed Management Organization Annual Meeting, the State of the City Address. We had a couple of park system master plan listening sessions and we were planning to do much more related to the park system master plan. So they're currently trying to revamp the engagement plan for that process. We did a workshop for online and organics and recycling. We did a Bloomington Race and Equality Forum. And we have a Youth Speaks Town Hall Forum coming up this Thursday as a matter of fact. We're also very active working on Census 2020. Our outreach and engagement team, our planning staff and others, we have a complete count committee that's working in partnership with our Human Rights Commission. We've mailed to 2,500 individual households and census tracks projected to have lower response rates. We've been promoting via the city's communication channels, including websites, social media, the briefing, in-person, in-person tabling at the Block Captain's Workshop. That was pre-pandemic. Census Promotion Package delivered to all Bloomington faith communities, senior living, congregant, living communities and rental properties in the northeast corner of the city. A new thing that we are starting up is called Let's Talk Bloomington. It's a new digital engagement tool. It's going to be rolled out to the community in the next couple of months. And this is a web-based tool that's going to increase communication and transparency on city projects through a multi-function approach. It'll have surveys, questions, guest books, polls, mapping. Our examples of the methods, community input will be gathered. Initial projects that will utilize Let's Talk Bloomington are the Community Budget Advisory Committee, Public Works Street and Traffic Projects and the Sustainability Energy Benchmarking. Our COVID-19 Outreach Team Communications includes outreach by coed, public health, our racial equity coordinator. Targeted outreach to key groups and organizations have included 46 multi-unit property managers and staff receiving weekly emails invited to participate in monthly virtual meetings. 44 faith communities receiving weekly emails and are invited to participate in monthly virtual meetings. Over 63 community leaders receive weekly emails and are invited to participate in virtual meetings. Leaders representing the Latinx, African-American, East African, Indigenous Americans, Asian-Americans, Muslim youth, seniors and LGBTQI communities. Over 61 small business owners are receiving weekly emails. And we had a significant business outreach as part of the Small Business Emergency Assistance Loan Program. In translation, we are significantly increasing our translation because we have growing households that speak a language other than English as their primary language. We've been doing radio ads that are focused on the community. And the public health hotline, which has been working with our public health clients. The need there has increased substantially in the last couple of months. We've also been utilizing Polco surveys. Polco is another new tool that we started using this year. We've done three different surveys online to get input on household status regarding community center and motor vehicle and an ongoing check-in related to the pandemic. And that's just since April of 2000. So that does not include, Mr. Mayor, a lot of the outreach and additional communication and engagement that's occurring with our police department right now, which is they have a unit with our crime prevention and just the outreach and engagement team within police of a combination of sworn and non-sworn personnel. And they were doing good work earlier in the year and their work has has doubled in terms of the expectations coming out of the events in May with the death of George Floyd and the, the focus on communities of color. So the point of all of this, Mr. Mayor and council members, in responding to Mr. Thule is the city of Bloomington is widely recognized as having one of the best communication and outreach units around. We work very hard. Uh, we work very hard to make sure that we're putting information in the hands of our community, and we're continuing to add tools all the time. Uh, as I mentioned, uh two new tools this year alone, the Polco and the uh Let's Talk Bloomington. Uh, I think the bottom line here is that uh residents who feel that we are not improving our communications, uh I I would say that there is plenty of information that is being distributed. There are always new ways to reach out and um not just communicate to people, but as Mr. Peterson mentioned in the last conversation about the Budget Advisory Committee, is going to where people are at and meeting them there and having conversation with them and engaging with them. And I think the bottom line is that if uh somebody disagrees with the work that the city is doing or the positions that the council is taking or the way that things are communicated is not the same as saying that we're not communicating. And so I just want to be real clear for the uh majority of residents out there uh who put um a a lot of stock in what we're doing that uh our communications efforts are consistently strong.
Thank you for that very comprehensive list. Much appreciated, and it's good to hear it all in one place. I think I I I was, I know I was aware of all that was going on, but to hear them all in one list and one presentation is impressive. And it also doesn't include the outreach and engagement and the 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 community work done by uh the members of our city council here. And I know full well that everybody spends plenty of time uh either online or interacting with commu- uh with community members, answering emails, answering phone calls, or for that matter, uh getting stopped and talking when you're at, when you're out getting groceries or when you're uh at the farmer's market or or anywhere else. And so uh I would agree with uh with your thought that uh I don't know that it's a matter of a lack of communication. It might be a disagreement with the direction. It might be a disagreement with a decision. It might be a disagreement with uh any number of things. But I I think to claim that it's a lack of communication, I think disregards all that we've been doing here in the city of Bloomington for as long as I've been around and uh sitting at this desk for the city of Bloomington. So I appreciate that. Council, any questions or anything to add? If not, we can move to item seven point two, which is our public comment period, which is a twenty-minute period where residents uh are allowed to address the council on any item not on the agenda. Uh, residents are limited, speakers are limited to a five-minute time period as they address the council. Again, items not on the agenda, tonight's agenda. We, as you all know, I'm sure that uh it's not uh a a back and forth. We won't give an immediate response, but rather we'll wait until the next meeting when the Mr. City Manager will give a response to any questions or specific or direct questions uh posed by any of the speakers. Uh, we will, of course, take an opportunity. If there are uh simple answers or corrections of fact, we'll we'll definitely do that. But uh this is, this is folks' time to come forward, and I know that we have at least one person who uh pre-registered, and I'm sure we have others as well. Uh Natalie Marose, I think, was the first person that I saw on the list to pre-register. So Ms. Wilson, if you could help us out here?
Yes, Maria, this is Chris. Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Chris.
Hi, Maria. Do you have Natalie Marose on the line?
Okay, I'll open up her line.
Thank you.
So uh Nat- Natalie Marose, your line is now open. Thank you. Shall I begin?
Good evening, Ms. Marose. Welcome. Yes, please begin.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Natalie Marose. I'm a resident of Bloomington. I'm calling tonight to request a revisit of the vote for ranked choice voting on this year's ballot. Our charter commission is, as it should be, the advisory to the council. However, you showed flagrant disregard for the charter's commission decision against putting ranked choice voting on this year's ballot. The commission met on two separate occasions, and both times came to the decision denying ranked choice voting beyond the ballot. In addition to that, on the advice of the city attorney, was an illegal reopening of the first meeting after it was adjourned. As stated in the city's FAQ's, quote, "If approved by the city council and charter commission, the issue of ranked choice voting would go to the voters at the November three, twenty-twenty general election," end quote. Putting ranked choice voting on the ballot was not approved by the charter commission. So once again, you ignored what you want to ignore, to do what you want to do to Bloomington. Despite the commission, city, and the city's own FAQ's, the charter commission decided against putting the charter change on this year's ballot, but you decided to do it anyway with a six-one vote. You also disregarded staff who informed you that a draft of rules and procedures for ranked choice voting should be done before the council vote. Due to what seems to be a con- consistent lack of integrity, citizens cannot even know what we'll be voting for. Is it a system to rank our top three candidates? Top five candidates? All the candidates or something else? If candidates were within a percentage that allows an automatic recount, would that recount be afforded to each of the candidates in every round of co- of vote counting? Since the removal of candidates in each round affects the outcome, and only the ballots of removed candidates get counted in the next round, the need for recounts is highly likely. Recounts are costly and cause delays. How would this increased need for recounts affect the process? How will the subsequent delays and increased cost of ranked choice voting, ranked choice voting be handled? Will the answer to these questions vary from year to year depending on what you want to do to Bloomington? Due to what seems to be a consistent lack of integrity, citizens cannot even know how much the new voting system will cost. As taxpayers, your guesses are not acceptable to us. It is irresponsible, not only with our voting, but with our tax dollars, to make the decision in the absence of an actual cost analysis. A cost analysis should have been done before deciding to put ranked choice voting on the ballot. Also stated on the city's FAQ page is, quote, "If there is a ballot question on ranked choice voting presented to the voters at the November twenty-twenty general election, additional information and educational materials about ranked choice voting will be provided on this page," end quote. I looked before tonight's meeting, and there are no additional information and educational materials about ranked choice voting provided on the page with voting beginning in just forty-three days. Forty-three days. Forty-three days is not enough time for citizens to get information, educational materials before voting on such a major change to our city charter. With no approval of the charter commission, with no rules and procedures for ranked choice voting, with no cost analysis, with no information, educational materials as promised, and with no more than forty-three days before voting begins, I am requesting that you revisit the vote for ranked choice voting charter change on this year's ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marose.
Maria, do we have any other callers that wish to address the council on Agenda Item seven point two?
And for anyone who would like to speak for Agenda Item number seven point two, please press power one on your telephone keypad. And now we have Anita Smithson on the line.
Good evening, Ms. Smithson. Are you there?
Hi, Mayor.
Good evening. Welcome. Please go ahead.
Hi, Mayor and council. Thank you for your time. My name is Anita Smithson. I'm calling in support of a declaration naming racism a public health crisis in our city. I'm glad that our city is starting to work on this this systemic issue. I would like to hear regular updates on the work and progress the city is making on racial equity in all areas, especially in the areas of policing, housing, and the COVID nineteen response. I would like to understand the data measurement standards being used, um how frequent council is receiving updates from staff, and how um the issue of um racism and racial equity is being prioritized internally within the city and also in how the city works with the community. And that's all I have. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Smithson. Ms. Wilson.
Maria, do we have any other callers that wish to address the council on Agenda Item seven point two?
Yes, we have Michelle Justin on the line.
Hello.
Good evening, Ms. Justin. Welcome.
Good evening. Uh, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Michelle Justin. I'm a resident of Bloomington. Mr. Mayor, you put out a statement to the public on June twenty-seventh about an incident involving a piece of rope tied into what appeared to be accrued news. It states it was discovered in a locker on June fifteenth and reported on June twenty-third. You then brought in the FBI to investigate. On July first, you gave us an update on the ongoing investigation. It has now been over a month since this has been discussed. Mr. City Manager, I would like to know and for the city to be informed if the city has determined whether this was a hate crime as implied or not. I would ask that this please be answered at the next council meeting, seeing that this got national news recognition, and since then, there has been silence from the city. I would also like to bring up that this, what the city manager listed tonight as talking to the uh community, it's all marketing. It's not communication. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Justin.
Maria, do we have any other callers for Agenda Item seven point two?
Yes, and we have Sharon Billings on the line.
Good evening, Ms. Billings.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Go ahead.
Good evening. Um, I, my name is Sharon Billings, and I am calling to voice my concern about pedestrian safety at the intersection of West Eighty-Fourth Street and Thomas Avenue South. This is a T-intersection located between Northwestern Health Sciences University and Washburn Elementary School. The pedestrian crosswalks to aid pedestrians crossing Eighty-Fourth Street includes highly visible signage, painted pavement stripes, and pedestrian-operated flashing signals. Nevertheless, I have personally experienced several close calls while crossing Eighty-Fourth Street on foot. Additionally, I have noticed that many vehicles appear to be traveling steep significantly faster than the posted thirty mile-per-hour speed limit there. Uh, therefore, I am recommending that the city investigate the feasibility of installing a stop sign on Eighty-Fourth Street at the intersection with Thomas Avenue to improve pedestrian safety at that intersection. Thank you for hearing me speak tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Billings. Ms. Wilson.
Maria, do we have any other callers for Agenda Item seven point two?
And we don't have additional callers from the public.
All right.
We have no additional callers. We've got about ten minutes left here, so I'll I'll leave the public comment period open for about uh a few more minutes here, and we will close it up. But uh in the meantime, we will move on, and we move on to item eight point one, which is a public hearing regarding American Square Apartments Development TIFF Project Area and TIFF Plans. Mr. Jason Schmidt from our Planning Department is going to lead us through this one. Good evening, Mr. Schmidt, and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Let me try to share my screen here. All right. Um, so just wave introduction. Once again, I'm Jason Schmidt. I am one of the analysts with the Port Authority. Also on the phone tonight uh for questions are Tom Denaway from Baker Tilly, the city and Port Authority's financial advisor, and Julie Eddington, the Port Authority's General Counsel.
Jason, my my apologies for putting you in the Planning Department. I I apologize for that. I did know indeed that you were with the Port Authority. My apologies.
No worries, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I am here actually before you on a Port Authority project uh for a public hearing and consideration for the creation of a housing TIFF district. The American Square Development Team of Mike Waldo and Carl Kading are also on the meeting uh for any questions. The development proposal is two phases. The first phase, called the Arter, is a two-hundred-and-forty-two-unit market rate apartment. The developer has elected to pay the fee in lieu of affordable units to meet the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. The developer is seeking to start construction on this project this coming fall. Phase two, called the Quinn, is preliminarily approved as an eighty-six-unit apartment building, which the developer will be seeking Minnesota housing tax credits. Uh, per the preliminarily approved Affordable Housing Plan, uh, the developer will be meeting the Opportunity Housing Ordinance by providing one hundred percent of these units uh at incomes at sixty percent or below the area median income. In addition, just to let you know, staff is still in negotiations with the developer on phase two um as the they are preliminary plans, and we are trying to um look at seeing if we can actually increase the very level of affordability in those units, see if we can go lower on some of the units than sixty percent AMI. Mixed-income development is a high ideal that is difficult to achieve, not only because of the cost difference, but also because of the structure of the development financing tools. And then a project that is one hundred percent affordable is much more likely to receive tax credits based on the Minnesota Housing Scoring Criteria. And the main goal of the Opportunity Housing Ordinance um is to provide affordable housing, which this proposal would be adding eighty-six units, potentially all at the sixty percent area median income. Potential construction on this phase would start the summer, potentially could start the summer of twenty-twenty-one. And so the city council actually approved the zoning entitlements for phase one and the preliminary development plans for phase two on this project back in June. So phase one would be located on the far eastern surface parking lot from the Crown Plaza Hotel in the existing parking ramp. Here's a quick site plan of the project, and then a rendering of the Arter looking south from American Boulevard. Phase two would be located on the surface parking lot south of the existing parking ramp and just north of the Apple Tree condominiums. Here's a quick site plan of the of the Quinn. Uh, the Quinn is actually positioned on the southern portion of that lot, which has underground parking, and just to the north is a separate uh parking ramp. Note that any TIFF funds, um if they were approved, uh would only go towards the phase-two apartment complex and would not be able to go towards any of the construction of this separate parking ramp. The commissions of both the Port Authority and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority have the ability to financially assist development projects separate from the city. Pan American and Portland Commons for the HRA and the Rosa Development just recently passed uh for the Port Authority are some examples. However, in order for the Port Authority to create a TIFF district, it is necessary for the city council to hold a public hearing, which you are doing tonight, and then to act on the consideration of the TIFF plan. The Port Authority's financing consideration for the American Square is to create a housing TIFF district with which we would look to capture increment, tax increment from both phases, both phase one and phase two. And in order to capture the phase-one increment, the TIFF district needs to be established prior to the issuance of the building permit on phase one. Majority of the tax increment in this district would be coming from the phase-one project. The increment that would be generated and captured um would only go towards TIFF eligible costs associated with the phase-two affordable housing project. The amount of the TIFF assistance is still in negotiations with the Port Authority and would be outlined in a future development agreement once the phase-two plans are nearing finalization. The new TIFF district will be established in the existing industrial development district, um also li- also known as the South Loop District, and will follow the property boundaries of the two lots as well as the Stormwater Outlet. The creation of a TIFF district will allow the city to capture the tax-based growth resulting from the new development. The property owner within the district continues to pay property taxes, like all property owners. However, the increased increment, which is captured here in this picture within the green triangle, um is captured to pay for affordable housing and improvements related to the affordable development. Any increment not going to the phase-two affordable project is captured and pooled by the Port Authority, which can be used for any future affordable housing project that meets the TIFF housing requirements. The term of the TIFF district would be twenty-six years, which at termination, the new development increment is then dispersed to all taxing jurisdictions on the full increment. The purpose of the TIFF plan provides statutory authorization, legal terminology, the boundaries of where increment will be collected and spent, and the type of district and the budget. As laid out in the attached resolution, uh statutory findings are required to approve the TIFF district. Back on July twenty-third, the Planning Commission approved a resolution confirming that the TIFF plan conforms with the Forward twenty-forty comprehen- that the TIFF plan conforms with the Forward Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan. Qualifications to meet a housing TIFF district. One of the requirements is that the TIFF Housing TIFF District requires at least forty percent of the units be affordable at the sixty percent AMI level for the duration of the TIFF district. In addition, housing rules also require that no more than twenty percent of the total square footage of buildings that receive assistance from tax increments may consist of commercial retail or other non-residential uses. This project would be following that guideline and meeting those standards. The city and port also need to analyze that the proposed development would occur, would not occur, but for the use of this tax increment financing. Based on staff's review with Baker Tilly's assistance, the project's preliminary financials identified that the project has too large of a financial gap that would, it would not occur but for this assistance. This graph is driven by the low rents for the eighty-six affordable units, and based on the reduced revenue, the project has a low debt coverage as well as low project returns compared to a market project. If construction of phase two does not move forward for the affordable project, and it does not start within four years from the creation of this TIFF district, under TIFF rules, the district would need to be decertified, and any increment that was collected would need to be dispersed back to all of the taxing jurisdictions. And with that, staff recommends approval of the attached resolution adopting the TIFF plan, and the Port Authority team as well as the developers are available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Council, any questions? Councilmember Loman and then Councilmember Nelson.
So just to help me understand and just the general public, you know, when we look at the fact that this is a TIFF district kind of located in the South Loop piece of that, kind of help me understand how that works. I know you showed that great graph there that where you talk about it, you're capturing the increment that's on top of what's already existing there. Help me understand how that works with an existing TIFF district that's already, you know, there, just for the general public, so they understand how that operates more.
Mr. Schmidt?
Sure. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Loman, let me actually go back to that graphic. I'm a visual person. And so how it works, so before the TIFF district is created, and so in essence today, if we're looking at this TIFF district, what we look at is what is the current base value of that TIFF district or that TIFF area that we're looking to create? If the TIFF district today is passed, what happens is that base value is frozen from this point on, from the date that the TIFF district is created to the date that the TIFF district is terminated. Any property taxes that are paid during that time period on the base value, all of the taxing jurisdictions continue to receive their portion. On the increased value, so once they develop the parcel, so once they put up the two apartment complexes or the first apartment complex and then phase two, that increased value, all of the taxes that are captured on that increased value would be captured in this TIFF district and would go to pay towards the TIFF eligible costs of the project, and any remaining dollars would be pooled by the Port Authority, which could in essence be used for any other affordable housing project within the South Loop. After the TIFF district is then terminated, the entire increment then gets dispersed back to all of the taxing jurisdictions.
So we're currently in a taxing, you know, this property is already currently in the South Loop. So if I understand what you were saying correctly, what you're saying is, is that that amount is part of that base value.
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Loman, the South Loop is the project area. It is not, the entire South Loop is not a TIFF district. We have multiple TIFF districts located within the South Loop area.
Okay, so this is. So basically, what you're saying is this is not already currently a part of one of those projects that are already occurring in the South Loop. So this is not, so this is its own, we're starting a new TIFF within this district taking place. So the entire South Loop is not a part of a TIFF district, right?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Loman, that is correct.
There you go. I wanted to clarify that because because some folks are writing me and saying, hey, how are we doing two TIFF districts on top of one another? So I want to just clarify that we do not have two TIFF districts that are taking place. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. My first question is, how does this amount of public support compare to other projects that have recently been approved? Kind of on a percentage basis of the overall cost?
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, I do not have a percentage cost, but I do have it based on per affordable unit. So just as an example, with the recent Rosa project, just to the north here, that was creating thirty-seven affordable units at the fifty percent AMI level. The tax increment financing, as well as the loan for that project, averaged about two hundred and ten thousand dollars per affordable unit. The preliminary analysis of this project, and like I said, we are still analyzing it. We have not determined the financial, total financial assistance for this project. But right now, if we were to go with the eighty percent increment, as which is documented here in this TIFF plan, that would equate to about one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars per affordable unit. And so it's about ninety-six thousand dollars less than the recent project we opposed. However, you also have to look at it as in the Rosa project, that one, we had units at the fifty percent AMI level. This one is at the sixty percent AMI level. So it's really hard for us to compare project to project because each one has its own unique circumstances.
Thank you for that information. I appreciate it. My second question and the part I'm struggling with the most is the meeting the but-for requirement for phase one, considering that the TIFF won't be used for that phase, so I mean, obviously, that phase doesn't need the TIFF. So how do I find, how do I find that it needs it when it explicitly doesn't need it?
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, the but-for test is for the project that is receiving the TIFF eligible increment, which is the phase two. So phase, what we're doing is we are looking to just capture the increment from phase one. Phase one is not receiving any tax increment or any assistance. That increment that we are capturing is helping us to cover the affordable housing costs within the phase two project.
Is there an example of where we've done a TIFF district on a market rate project in order to fund a different project?
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, I am thinking of one project that, and I'm trying to remember if it went through or not, is actually the Bloomington Central Station. We looked at adding in the Cambria Hotel lot to see, to capture that increment to assist the Bloomington Central Station development. So with that is we amended that TIFF district or that TIFF boundary to help capture it. And I can actually defer, I think Julie Eddington might be on, and she might have a little bit more background on that project.
Ms. Eddington, are you with us this evening?
I am, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening. Welcome.
Excellent. I just wanted to add to Jason's comments that our firm has done this on several occasions where there is a contiguous project that is a market rate housing deal that is included in the TIFF district in order to fund an adjacent affordable housing project. We have specifically discussed this issue with the the person in charge of the office, the state auditor's office with respect to tax increment, and they have agreed that this is a reasonable use of tax increments. And so we've done these in several different cities. I'm not aware of any that we've done in the South Loop area, but we have done them in other cities within the metro.
Thank you, Ms. Eddington. And if I could, Councilmember Nelson, I know that we have Shane Rudling, who's the Port Authority Administrator, who may have something to add to this as well. Good evening, Mr. Rudling. Are you there?
Just a minute, I need to.
Oh, standing by.
Try him again.
Shane, are you there this evening?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can indeed. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Yeah, so what's being referred to is pooling generally, so using TIFF districts inside of a, either the TIFF district or the project area or TIFF eligible expenses is done a lot with the mall district, Bloomington Central Station, and others across the city. And as Ms. Eddington said, you know, and other clients that she serves. I might answer Councilmember Loman's question a little bit differently, too, from earlier. So the South Loop District is our industrial development district, and has lots of smaller TIFF districts within that larger industrial development district. So you've got the mall, you've got the old district, the Carlton District, you've got Bloomington Central Station, potentially Rosa and potentially American Square. So you have these little districts. The rest of the tax base in South Loop happens just like it normally does. They pay taxes and it goes to the normal funds. Whereas you create these TIFF districts and you say, okay, the base value is going to go to the normal places where it normally goes. But any new value that's created, meeting the goals that the city wants to do in the particular TIFF district, then gets collected for those TIFF eligible expenses. And so did I answer the questions?
Councilmember Nelson, did that enlighten you with your question there?
Yeah.
It did? Very good.
Appreciate that background and how that works, so thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of questions. So in addition to using the tax increment captured from phase one to ensure that the project for phase two can move forward, you said that the developer also chose to do the, in lieu of, they had to pay the in lieu of fee, correct? And do you know how much that was off the top of your head?
Mr. Schmidt?
And if not?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Carter, I do not have that off the top of my head. However, I can get that back to the city council.
And it was more, I guess that piece was more out of curiosity, but then that fee or that payment goes into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Carter, what the Opportunity Housing Ordinance allows is for a developer to pay the fee in lieu, and then within two years, if they develop an affordable project, the fee in lieu can help to offset some of the development costs of this project. If they do not fulfill that requirement or meet that two-year requirement, at that time, the entire fee in lieu payment is officially deposited into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and can be used anywhere throughout the city.
Okay, so that fee is being used to cover the cost of the phase two development, the affordable units, and if phase two doesn't move forward, then the captured TIFF will go back to the various taxing jurisdictions, and the fee would go into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Carter, that is correct.
Okay, just want to make sure I'm understanding. So then my second question. In the packet, there was a sentence that said, "Phase two proposes to rent the bottom level of parking to phase one, which would be classified as commercial use." And I will be honest, like that does not sit very well for me. That feels pretty, kind of, I'm trying to like use a nicer term, but I was going to say it feels a little bit icky. And I'm wondering if they would reconsider that. I mean, could they charge for the phases or the parking in the underground and have the parking structured, parking spots be free? I just, it feels, maybe I'm misunderstanding what they're proposing, but to me, it sounds like they're giving the market rate underground parking in the affordable building. Am I understanding that wrong?
Mr. Schmidt, can you clarify the parking situation for us?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Carter, if you can recall, the entitlement process for phase one, when this went through, the parking that was being met on the phase one site was very low. It was almost like a one-to-one per unit. And so what they are looking to do is to build an additional parking ran, or level below the phase two project, and tenants within phase one would be able to rent those spaces. Levels one and two of the parking ramp in the phase two would be free for the tenants in the phase two project. And the phase two project is fully parked, and I believe did not receive any parking deviation or is proposed to receive any parking deviation from the city code. But I can let the developer actually expand on that if you would like.
No, I think you answered my question. So so almost all of the parking for both buildings is underground in phase two? Am I totally misunderstanding that?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Carter, almost all of the parking for both phase one and phase two is underground.
Got it. Okay, thank you for clarifying that because I definitely misunderstood, and it's very helpful. That's all I have. Thank you.
And just a clarification, Mr. Schmidt, so the parking that would be rented out would be to the phase one tenants and not to the tenants of the office who currently use the decrepit and crumbling parking ramp that's adjacent to the office tower, correct?
So Mr. Mayor, the, as I had stated earlier, there is a separate parking ramp that is being built just to the north of the Quinn apartment, and that's going to be detached. That, but it's about just over three hundred spaces is available to be rented from the Apple Tree towers, office towers, as well as any guests that would be visiting the phase one or phase two project would be able to park there.
So that's, I'm sorry if I missed your explanation the first time through, but is that part of the, officially part of this project and officially part of this TIFF district?
Mr. Mayor, correct. So this is a better diagram. So this parking right here, this is the top level of this parking ramp, which is actually in line with the first level or the ground level of this, of the project, would be able to be rented to the office complex just to the west. And then additional guest parking for both phase one and phase two would use this ramp. No TIFF assistance would be going to cover any costs of this ramp. However, the TIFF district would be able to capture the small tax increment from a parking ramp.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Council, any additions? Council, any additional questions? Mr. Schmidt, you said the applicants were available. Uh, did either Mr. Kating or Mr. Waldo have anything to add to your presentation?
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Mike Waldo with Ron Clark Construction. Uh, no, I think Jason's done a great job. Uh, I know the parking is a little bit confusing, but the reality is in the key for the workforce is that the first two levels of the workforce building will have all free parking. So each each resident will receive one stall per unit. Then because of the elevation of the existing ramp and the retaining wall, we needed another level to push us up in the air enough so that the first floor units, uh, had a decent view. So that's why we ended up the third level of parking at the bottom. Just from an efficiency standpoint, that'll be available to be rented to whoever, whether it's one of our workforce residents needing another stall, whether it's a market rate needing a stall, or even whether it's one of the office buildings who want a heated stall underneath. So that's kind of, and that revenue is generated into the workforce building to offset some of the need. So it still benefits the workforce, uh, so it's not, it's not being taken in shell gaming, as Councilmember Carter was concerned about where it was all going. Everything fits in that overall pro forma, but it just makes everything work better. Um, as many Councilmembers know, we were trying to cut a deal with the existing ramp, which has been nearly impossible, uh, even though they have about four hundred additional stalls than what they need. Uh, we still believe there's a potential that they will come to their right senses and allow us to rent spaces from them. At that point, our goal would be to expand the workforce building and eliminate that other parking ramp. Uh, but again, at this point, we're still haven't heard back from them and are still working through that. So again, both Carl and I are here for any questions anyone would have, but, uh, appreciate you considering this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waldo. Council, any questions of Mr. Waldo or Mr. Kating? If not, uh, this is a public hearing, and I'd like to open this up as a public hearing. This is item eight point one, a public hearing on American Square Apartments Development, Tiff Project Area and Tiff Plans. Ms. Ms. Wilson?
Maria, do we have any callers wishing to speak to the council on Agenda Item Eight Point One?
And for anyone who would like to speak for Agenda Item Eight Point One, please press star one on your telephone keypad. And we don't have any comments from the public.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no one coming forward electronically, Council, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Colter?
Second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Colter and a second by Councilmember Carter to close the public hearing. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. So Council, any additional questions or comments or discussion on this? Uh, this is, uh, th- this came through the the Port Authority. We had a good discussion on it at the Port Authority. Uh, good presentation this evening by Mr. Schmidt and good questioning. Any additional questions or comments, concerns on this? Councilmember Loman?
Well, really, I just, um, glad to see that we're adding, you know, some more affordable housing in the city. I'm wondering how many units we're up to now. I mean, just, uh, you know, if we've got a, just so the public kind of knows kind of where we're at, don't necessarily need to answer for that right now, but I just, uh, well, every time I turn around, it seems like we're, uh, putting up some more, uh, more affordable housing. Certainly, I know we're losing some with, uh, with respect to some of the the other units, but, uh, it just seems like we are making some progress here.
I would agree. We we do seem to be making project progress, and, uh, I think we're, um, frankly, lapping some of our neighbors here in, uh, our part of town in terms of how many, uh, workforce and affordable housing units we are adding to the, uh, to the city's stockpile. Uh, Mr. Veroggi, do you have a specific number or can we get that back to Councilmember Loman?
I was looking at Mr. Sch- Schmidt, Mr. Mayor, to see if, uh, he had that off the top of his head. You know, we do have a, uh, dynamic map on our website, but, uh, planning and our port and HRA teams are constantly updating that information. How about we, uh, go back, we'll pull that number together and put it in, uh, an upcoming weekly report.
I think that's fair. Thank you. Council, anything else? If not, I would look for a motion on this, Council.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm I'm happy to make the motion.
Councilmember Colter, please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will move to adopt the resolution attached to the staff report finding the modification to the amended and restated development plan for Industrial Development District Number One, South Loop District, and approving a tax increment financing plan for tax increment financing District Number One K.
Second.
We got a motion by Councilmember Colter and a second by Councilmember Carter to, uh, adopt the resolution as stated. Council, any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bussey?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Colter?
Aye.
Loman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. Well, congratulations, and, uh, I look forward to, uh, to this getting started. So thank you very much to both the port staff for their work on this, but also to our applicants and, uh, the folks who have been working on this for a while. This is a, this is a big step forward on on, uh, on on a piece of property. I think that'll be a great addition in the South Loop. So thank you very much and get started. Good work.
Thank you, Mayor and Staff. We look forward to it.
Very good. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to make a final call for tonight's public comment period. We are well past the twenty minutes, but, uh, now is the natural break time. So Ms. Wilson, if you could check, make one last check to see if there's anyone who, uh, one last speaker for our public comment period.
Maria, do you have any final callers on the line going back to Agenda Item Seven Point Two?
And for anyone who would like to speak for Agenda Item Seven Point Two, please press star one on your telephone keypad. And we don't have any comments from the public.
Thank you, Maria. That concludes our public comment and public hearings for the night, so you are welcome to disconnect the call. Thank you for your assistance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Well done. Thanks.
Good night, Curtis.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks.
Like to call now, uh, move on to Item Nine, Organizational Business, and call Item Nine Point One, which is an update on our COVID nineteen community meetings. So for the past few months, our, uh, community outreach and engagement team has been out, uh, meeting both, I think, generally virtually. I don't know if they've met any in person. I'm sure we'll hear about that, uh, meeting with different groups across the community to, uh, give those community members an opportunity to share with, uh, the city and with one another how they're dealing with the the COVID nineteen pandemic and and the fallout from it. And, uh, Ms. Melissa Wurst Prasad is here to update us on that. Ms. Wurst Pa- Ms. Wurst Prasad, are you there? I think I see your name on the list. There you are.
I am. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm just going to pull up my presentation. And can everyone see the presentation?
We can see it here. Let's see if it's going out. Everybody can see it. Very good. We're good to go.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. And as, uh, Mayor Bussey said, I'm here to provide you with some highlights from the community meetings, which have been taking place since April. And these were developed as part of the COVID nineteen outreach plan. Um, and if you'll recall, I presented to you in June an overview of that plan, and tonight I'll be primarily just focusing on updates from those community meetings. And so, um, just to recap, here are the members of the outreach team, um, which are myself, Nancy Brewster, Joan Balfour, um, who is from Public Health, but has been helping us with, uh, this effort, as well as Amanda Crombie, Emily Larson, and Tracy Smith. And the target audiences that our outreach plan, um, for COVID nineteen includes older adults, our BIPOC communities, people with disabilities, low-income individuals and families, and small businesses with a specific emphasis on women and minority-owned. So with our outreach plan, we, um, identified key groups to reach those target audiences, and they include multi-unit housing, faith communities, community leaders, our nonprofits, and community partners, as well as small businesses and residential facilities that are serving people with disabilities. Um, initially, we started our plan, uh, with weekly communications being sent via email to contacts within those groups, and that has continued. Um, and the groups involved, um, are those that have also been invited to participate in virtual meetings. And the frequency of these meetings, um, including the agenda and topics, are determined by the groups, um, and what they are interested in hearing about, um, which are facilitated by one of the, um, outreach team members. So we'll start with, uh, multi-unit housing. So the number of meetings that they have held are six. Uh, the frequency of these meetings, um, is bi-weekly on a bi-weekly basis when they first began, and they are now taking place, uh, monthly. The next meeting is going to be August nineteenth at one P M. And again, these are all being held virtually. Um, participants at this meeting include, uh, multi-unit housing leaders or property managers. Uh, we also have a liaison who's been joining regularly from the Minnesota Department of, um, Health and Housing, as well as our, um, one of our environmental health program coordinators, Mark Stagnus. So the key themes that we've heard coming, um, out of these meetings are resources for residents and property managers. Um, so they've appreciated the information that the city's been providing, um, including information for Veep and how their residents can apply for rental assistance. Um, they've been communicating with their residents via email or going door-to-door with flyers, and, um, they've appreciated being able to connect with other property managers through this, um, virtual meeting. And they also have set up a new Facebook page created by one of the property managers for others to join, um, which they've found very beneficial in being able to connect and learn best practices from each other and how others are managing. Um, emerging challenges for this group, um, they're seeing more conflict management than usual with their residents, um, which they believe is a result of, uh, people just having to spend more time in their units. Uh, they do see challenges with their residents who are not paying their rent, um, or are not applying for rental assistance during this moratorium on evictions. Um, as property managers themselves can't apply for financial assistance, um, they're seeing this as a challenge for residents that, um, have not taken advantage of some of those resources. Um, and safety and social distancing challenges, those include, um, finding a hard time having guidance on maintaining safety for both their staff and residents in common spaces and amenities, um, such as lounges, laundry rooms, um, their outdoor patios, as well as swimming pools. Um, the role and expectation of them as staff members and property managers to maintain so- safety protocols has been unclear. Uh, so it's been very helpful to have our environmental health, um, staff attending as well as that liaison, um, from the state. They've also reported that being short-staffed is a challenge, uh, particularly if they have an employee or contractor that tests positive for COVID nineteen and then staff has to quarantine for fourteen days. Um, they also see that residents, um, have high expectations for their property managers to be enforcing social distancing measurements, um, and increased disappointment when they're not able to meet their expectations. Um, and they do find it concerning that property managers are not notified when a resident, um, tests positive for COVID nineteen. So now I'll talk about the faith community leaders' meetings, and they've had a total of five meetings, um, taking place every three weeks. The next meeting taking place will be Wednesday, August nineteenth at noon. Uh, they will have a guest speaker from Hennepin County, and the topic will be the Hennepin County Family Shelter Process. And participants at these meetings include the faith-based community leaders, as well as staff, um, from these different congregations. They also have, uh, Minnesota Department of Health staff liaison that's been attending, as well as our city's Assistant Public Health Administrator, Nick Kelly. And key themes for these meetings, um, includes resources. Uh, so again, we've been providing weekly emails, as I mentioned, with resources and updates on different city, um, information that we're providing. Um, they do appreciate the public health staff participation, um, especially to navigate, um, some of those gray areas of COVID nineteen in terms of, uh, safety and preparedness. Uh, they do appreciate the outreach from the city, um, especially during this time. And emerging challenges for faith leaders is the, um, next theme that was identified. And things they've reported here is just challenges with being able to carry out, um, some of the sacraments that they they do with the COVID nineteen restrictions, such as funerals and baptisms. Also limiting the number of people gathering, uh, who do they accept, who do they turn down, uh, the ability to express unity in a polarized society when everyone is, um, operating virtually. They're also concerned about financial needs from community members. They see that increase as more people, um, will be turning to them for financial assistance. And, um, they are looking at how they can have coordinated efforts to assist individuals and families that might be experiencing homelessness, um, which is why, as you saw, their next meeting will have a, um, an individual from Hennepin County that can address that process. And the third theme, the social distancing and safety challenges experienced by community members, um, like all of us, community members are eager to return to that, um, normal pre-pandemic state. Uh, they're reporting loneliness, especially among their, um, senior congregation members and residents that live alone just from the lack of social interaction and not being able to participate, um, into those traditional, um, activities that their congregations hold. And also just having to navigate the technology, tired of having online interactions and really missing that in-person contact. So next, we'll, um, talk about our Latinx Community Leader Meetings. So the number of meetings that have taken place here are eight. Um, they originally began every two weeks and will be transitioning to monthly, um, but do meet depending on need, uh, more frequently as needed. And the next meeting here is Tuesday, August eighteenth, um, at three thirty to five P M. And they will be providing input on the city's twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget as part of the Community Budget Advisory Committee's outreach, um, which my team is also helping to work on. And participants that attend these meetings are representatives from Partnership Academy, Lared, uh, the Office of Educational Equity from Bloomington Schools, Hennepin County Library, Muheras Latinas Minnesota, Navigate Minnesota, and Outdoor Latinos. And they've had a number of guests at this meeting, um, several different city staff departments, including, um, our police department, community development staff, legal, our racial equity coordinator. And then they've also had, um, Bloomington Public Schools attend, as well as the, um, executive director from Veep, uh, staff from Home Line, and staff from, uh, Hennepin County with the Joint Community Police Partnership Program as well. And, um, Councilmember Carter and Colter have also attended this meeting. So they've had a number of guests, um, that have been able to either provide resources and information and clarify services that organizations provide, um, or just to hear, um, the conversation and what the needs are in the community. And key themes and topics for this group, um, for resources, information, and updates, uh, rental assistance has been a big concern and just housing stability. Also, um, questions on masks, how to use masks, and where they can receive donations, food insecurity, and just getting up-to-date information on our school lunch program, uh, small business loans, as well as grant opportunities that we've shared information on. Um, and then also how to use our parks safely. And then, um, there were also a lot of interest about tabs and license renewal that information was provided. And then, um, our next theme that came forward was eligibility for resources and support. Um, so with the Latinx community, um, there are a number of undocumented individuals and families, and so we were providing information about resources, particularly for rental assistance, that would be eligible for people that are out of status. And so that included Veep and, um, having Joe McDonald, the executive director, go, um, through that process with the group, uh, was very beneficial and very helpful for them to hear and to be able to ask questions. Um, George Floyd and the death of George Floyd was a topic that was also discussed, as well as policing and community relations. And some key themes that came out of there were concerns about ICE, uh, use of force, uh, racial profiling of people of color, uh, having Spanish-speaking officers, and then just wanting to know more about the Joint Community Police Partnership Program and Bloomington's, uh, Multicultural Advisory Committee. So they also had suggestions and ideas, um, that these leaders wanted to share. The first one is having more translations in Spanish. Um, specifically, they suggested the Bloomington briefing, um, wanting to see more key messages from the city translated, um, such as the curfew during the, um, protest at the end of May, perhaps the mayor's minute, or any safety messages. Another idea that they've shared is to have a welcome center, so a one-stop-shop where new residents can learn about city services and to have that welcome center staffed with individuals that speak Spanish and Smali. Um, the other was the police mixed conduct complaint form. Um, and this is where they were given an opportunity to provide input on the- opportunity to provide input on this form. And they did review it and recommended an anonymous option be included. And then the fourth suggestion and idea that they have is to have an ombudsman program, or individual who's available to serve as an impartial person, who can relay complaints or concerns about police or other city staff as a neutral party. And then our next group is the African leaders. So this group has met three times, and they meet once a month, or more frequently depending on need. And the next meeting is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, August 25th at 1:00 PM. And they will also be providing input on the Community Budget Advisory Committee and giving information on their thoughts for the 2021-2022 budget. And the participants that attend this meeting are representatives from AFIP, which is Action for East African People, Success Academy, MCC Al-Raqman, the Alliance, and then there are also individual community members that attend. And this group has had Chief Potts attend these meetings as well. So the key themes and topics, and there were several that these meetings have discussed, tabs and license renewal also came up here, rental assistance, unemployment insurance, loss of income, COVID-19 testing, and just wanting to know when and where and how to get those tests. Also, concerns in this community as well about masks, having access to and how to use those. Mental health, family abuse and suicide was also discussed, and resources were provided. And additional themes and topics included food resources. This community was also wanting to make sure that they understood how to use the parks, how they can keep their kids active. They also had concerns about racial profiling and policing, concerns about kids getting behind in school. They also discussed George Floyd, and in general, just parents concerned for their children, especially the boys in their community. And as I mentioned, Chief Potts did attend these meetings and has been able to respond to questions and concerns that they had related to policing, which they very much appreciated, having the opportunity to meet with him. So suggestions and ideas coming out of this community meeting. The first was to create a program for youth, exposing them to different careers within city government. And they also suggested a video on what to do when being pulled over by the police. Next was our African-American leader meeting, and we have met four times, just once a month. The next meeting here will take place on Wednesday, August 26th. The topic here will be on the Parks Master Plan, focus conversation around that plan. And then in September, they will also be providing input on the city's 2021-2022 budget. The participants at this meeting are Dr. Hazel Claiborne. She is the pastor at Potter's House of Jesus Christ. And the guests at this meeting have included councilmember Carter, as well as Ashley Clement from our Communications Division. And the key themes and topics discussed here, COVID-19 concerns and resources. Again, concerned about having activities for kids to do during this time, rental assistance, food resources, masks, different messaging regarding COVID-19. They've found confusing, they're not exactly sure who to trust, just with so much different information out there from local levels, state and national levels. And then they've also been interested in learning more about different grants available, as well as how to apply for unemployment insurance. And they did discuss George Floyd's death. Dr. Claiborne stated that the community is devastated over his death. She felt that that's pushed us way back in trusting police, but the community has been praying for both police and the Floyd family. She noted not seeing as much support in Bloomington for Black Lives Matter as compared to what has been seen in Minneapolis in terms of signs, rallies, artwork. And she reported that mothers with black sons are afraid or scared. She's looking at a way for ideas to bring mothers with sons where they can share their concerns. For policing, she reported that she feels police need to be more honest and transparent. She suggested having data shown and demographics of who is being stopped by police. She'd like to see the police do better with connecting with the black community and churches, and would like to see more money being put into this type of engagement and an increase in training for police. And suggestions and ideas here were to host a discussion on what to do when pulled over by police, and to have photos in the Bloomington briefing more reflective of the community, and to feature stories of BIPOC community members. And finally, our last group is community partners. So the number of meetings held here has been 18, and they were occurring once a week through June, and are now taking place bi-weekly. The next meeting scheduled for this group is Tuesday, August 11th, from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. These meetings also include our city manager, who facilitates these with a number of city staff, including myself, that attends. And participants include Veep, Oasis for Youth, Cornerstone, Bloomington Public Schools, Normandale Community College, and our Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. So key themes and topics at each meeting are Nick Kelly from Public Health provides an update with the latest information and health impacts for COVID-19. And then each organization has been sharing the impacts that they've been experiencing. And common themes are planning for school this fall, which, as we know, is taking place tonight, a continued discussion. And an increased anticipation of increased requests for food and rental assistance, looking at especially that increasing this month and into the fall. Working to serve as many youth as possible, especially at Oasis for Youth, and helping them get connected to unemployment benefits and other programs that they might be eligible for. With our Cornerstone, who's also been attending, they've been working to secure and manage overflow shelter space for families experiencing domestic violence. And then another impact was the challenge of being able to provide summer meals to families by the school district with their limited staffing. So also, we talk about potential collaborations. So we were able to identify a few. This summer, the city and school district partnered to be able to provide meals to families at Smith Park. The city will also be partnering with the Chamber next week to host cloth mask distributions for Bloomington businesses. And earlier in April and May, city staff also provided support at Veep to help with both their food program, as well as to help Spanish-speaking rental assistance applicants. So here are some of the outcomes that have come from these meetings. Police complaint form is online, and it has had an adjustment, so it can be submitted anonymously. The police department is working to produce a video on what to do when pulled over. Police policies are now available on the city's website. Veep is working to train their volunteers on racial equity. Dr. Claiborne, who is African-American, will be featured in the October briefing, based on her suggestion to have more people of color and reflective of the community. And also, two Spark Grants were received by leaders to do programming in their communities. And these were resources that we had shared in our weekly updates for potential funding opportunities. One is going to use that to do children's activities in the East African community, and then another is to do a cooking demonstration for healthy meals. And please feel free to reach out to me directly if any of you are interested in attending these upcoming meetings. And I can now answer any questions that you have.
Well, thank you very much. Another impressive list of community outreach and engagement and communications activities by city staff. So thanks very much. It's great to see, and I do appreciate the work that goes into this. Councils, any questions? Councilmember Baloga?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Melissa, to start off with, I want to echo the mayor's comments. It is quite impressive, and quite broad-ranging. And to that end, I was surprised that when I saw our community partners list and all the other lists of participants, that Hennepin County wasn't shown on there. Was that an oversight on our part to not invite them, or did they decline? And the reason I ask is that they have more mental health capabilities to meet many of those issues that you mentioned through the various slides than we do as a city. So I'll let you respond to that one before I go through that next one.
Sure, thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Baloga. So Hennepin County, as I mentioned, with the faith communities, as well as the multi-unit properties, do have liaisons through Hennepin County that have been assigned. So through these meetings, we've been able to provide resources to Hennepin County, and then in turn have those liaisons connect property managers or faith leaders to provide those resources directly, as well as making referrals to our East African community, which, if you recall in my presentation, that was a community that expressed concerns specifically about mental health and suicide and domestic abuse. So we are connecting, but they have not been attending every meeting, but have been brought in when the agenda and topics are set by the groups for what they want to learn more about.
Terrific, thank you. The second one is that since this is a COVID-19 discussion, one of the most impacted groups are our seniors, and I didn't see anything specifically directed to the senior population. Can you speak to that, Melissa?
Sure. So we have not had a specific community meeting with seniors, but that is part of the outreach that we are doing through our weekly conversations and emails. We do have a group of staff that work with long-term care facilities, serving seniors, as well as our Creekside Community staff are still in contact with the Creekside participants there, as well as public health, senior health nurses. But we do not have a specific community meeting set up with that group. That's something we definitely could look into and see if there are community members that would like to meet either weekly or monthly to address their concerns.
I would appreciate it if you reached out and had that discussion acted accordingly. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will do that.
Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to echo my thanks. And I want to just say that in the couple of meetings that I was able to attend, they were really helpful for me personally in understanding some of the different challenges that people are experiencing in our community. And then I also was just really struck by the really, the relationship building happening, the collaboration among city staff and our community residents and community partners, and the trust that's being built. And I don't know how many of those relationships were there before the pandemic, and how many are new. But I do think that this is one of those things that's going to be a silver lining once we get on the other side of the pandemic, and have all of this robust work that's been done together in partnership, working toward, you know, really creating a community that's better for everyone. And so, thank you so much for doing that. And I know it's been a lot of work, and I'm really grateful to you and your staff. So one just quick comment. In your first slide, related to property managers and the property managers coming together, I think that you had, you know, you said a little bit about how, you know, some people are struggling to pay rent and may not have applied for rental assistance yet. And I'm just wondering if any of the property managers, or I guess more so the owners of some of those buildings, would be eligible for the small business loans? I know that that application will be closing shortly, and I cannot recall in our application if, and some of them may be way too big, but I'm just curious to know if this has come up as a possible resource for that group of people, especially since they don't have a lot of resources to apply for it themselves.
Ms. Wirtherson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Carter. That question actually has come up not only for multi-unit properties, but also faith communities have also been interested. And my understanding, based on our program, is that they are not eligible, the multi-unit properties or faith communities. But we can definitely look into that further, and then get back to you on that through one weekly or next council meeting.
And I think it's important to note, Councilmember Carter, I think the Small Business Emergency Loan Program closed at 4:00 this afternoon. So, but good thought, though.
Yeah, I knew it was closing soon, but I couldn't recall.
Yep, about five hours ago soon. So yes.
Well, thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much. Just briefly, I wanted to echo Councilmember Baloga's point regarding senior outreach. I just know, kind of when I was serving on the Advisory Board of Health, and early on in my term, when I got here, a big issue that's only grown since was the number of seniors that were now living in their homes alone, and kind of the social isolation, increased risk of accidents, poor health outcomes, a range of things. So whether it's just aggregating the information that we're getting from our public health folks, kind of throughout all those touchpoints, or holding, I guess even better, a standalone opportunity with now substantial risks about going out at all, I would really love to hear some themes about how we can best support those folks right now, especially.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Martin. I would be happy to put some information together. I know Public Health does have a group that we're looking, and a program to support neighbors, specifically older adults. We also have our Public Health Resource Line, which our city manager mentioned during the response to public comment period. But I would be happy to put something together that consolidates all those different efforts.
That's really, thank you.
Yes, I think that would be helpful. Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I need to say, wow, good, wonderful work being done here. Just as I read this through, it makes me kind of tired, just thinking how much work you guys are doing. So, you know, I think Councilmember Baloga asked a question, but I want to ask it a little bit differently. So we've got all these groups, you know, that make up different demographics, you know, in the city of Bloomington. How do we, you know, choose these groups? You know, and I'm not necessarily looking for an answer today, but you know, but I think that's one of the questions that I kind of have when we look at, you know, just the demographics and the breakdown within our community. I'm just curious about, there's other groups that are kind of not on this list. Was there some criteria that we used, or was it, you know, how difficult was it to try to get these groups organized? That's kind of one of my questions. Another one of my question is, when we, when we use the terminology leader, you know, within, you know, the slide presentation of these groups, how did we get to that, decide, you know, these folks, you know, constitute leaders within, within those communities? Again, not looking for answers now. We can take this offline, too, and have a conversation about this. And then, when we're kind of done with this, you know, we certainly saw all those great outcomes that are out there. How do we know that we've succeeded with this? I know we've got a vision there. You know, are we going to do surveys? You know, what constitutes a success within this area? These are kind of the things that I've been kind of thinking about as I kind of look at this. Also recognizing that, you know, we had that limited staff there, and it's not like we've got a huge department to do all these things. And there are other things that are going on all at the same time. But I wanted to just throw those things out there at you, just to kind of get some ideas out there to think about this as a, maybe as an ongoing process, or just, you know, I know this is kind of one of the first times we've kind of done this, but just want to throw some questions out there to, just some questions I've been thinking about as a council member. How do we reproduce this? How do we make sure this is a successful program kind of moving forward?
Sure, thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Lohman. So to address your first portion of it, how did we identify these groups? So looking at some of the data, and who is considered more at risk and may not receive the same information that others might relate it to the, I know, why it's important to wear a mask, and just keeping safety, and all those issues related to COVID-19, we identified seniors, which is, we saw especially on the onset, large impacts in the long-term care, which are now, we're seeing the demographics change for, to younger ages being impacted. And then we also knew that our BIPOC communities would also be more impacted primarily just because of disparities, whether it's, you know, living in more congregate settings, or working a lot of those frontline, central worker positions. And so we wanted to make sure, looking at the network and that we already had, and the contacts that we had in those key groups, and then expanding those out for, to make them larger and try to reach as many as we can, recognizing that we're not, we're still not reaching everyone. And there's, you know, there's always room for improvement. So we recognize that. In terms of how the virtual meetings began, as I mentioned, we initially started out just doing weekly emails. We initially contacted individual community members who had a fairly good-sized circle of influence. We knew if we wanted to get information to Latina childcare providers, if we talked to LARED, who is an organization that provides support for that, that would be a great connection and reach, you know, over 300 members that they have. Same thing with Action for East African People, that provides information or resources. So we knew if we contacted the staff there, they would be able to take the information we were providing. they would be able to take the information we are providing and send it out to their communities. And so we were really looking and not only at organizations, but also individuals that we knew that were just kind of a go-to in their communities and had a large network of friends and family and in contacts within their own communities. So we connected with those individuals and then they've been sharing their information. But these meetings have really grown organically from emails to we were seeing questions come in and then the idea was, well, you know, we have to meet virtually, but let's just try it and see how it goes. And I think like all of us, we've all just adapted, including faith leaders and multi-unit property managers and our different community leaders. I will say with having Zoom come on, we're actually anticipating this to be even easier. Having that platform available because we have seen that that has been a barrier with some individuals. I know even with the veterans that I meet with on the Veterans Memorial that for some reason our WebEx, it's just more challenging. So I'm excited that we're going to have Zoom for that. So just continuing to and and work with these groups. And we've actually, as a team discussed today, how do we keep these relationships going when COVID nineteen is over and 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 how do we keep developing these? And how do we keep connected and keep them engaged and involved with the city and, you know, talk about, you know, get feedback and input on programs and services and address those needs in the communities that they're seeing. So that is something that we are looking at for continuing as well.
Very good. Thank you much. Councilmember Carter, is that a new hand up or is a leftover hand? And the same with Councilmember Beloga, new hand up or a leftover hand?
It's a new, it's a new one. I usually do forget to put it down.
Very good. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So one quick follow-up question. Have you done any kind of intentional outreach or engagement with tenants? It strikes me that when we got the kind of property manager update that there wasn't anything about tenants. And I'm curious if there's anything going on with with residents who are living in the multifamily unit housing.
We haven't related to the community meetings. We're really using those property managers to get that information out to their residents. With that being said, with certain projects, as was mentioned, for promotion of the census, we did mailings and outreach to individual units. Rather than going through the property managers for that. And we are with the Parks Master Plan. I know that Amanda Crombie on my team has got some meetings set up with rentals. Unit. Families and individuals.
So I'm just, I mean, just an idea, throwing it out there, you know, with the established meetings that you already have coming up, even like thinking about the veterans group and hitting this and reaching the senior population. I mean, is this an opportunity then for existing relationships and existing meetings to just add on a little piece of the agenda where it's like, you know, how are you guys doing related to COVID? Do you have any questions? How are you feeling? Things like that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you. Council, anything else to add here? As I said earlier, an impressive body of work that you've put together with your team there, Ms. Wirsprasan, thank you so very much. And and I think I'd echo a lot of the comments of the sentiments. I hope this all continues even after we're out of the COVID woods here and are moving forward because I think it's an outstanding, an outstanding way to to increase that dialogue between the city and and different groups of residents in the city. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on if we could. Let's move on to item nine point two, which is a discussion of our rules of procedure, which we've been trying to tackle bit by bit and piece by piece here over the few meetings. And I would like to continue to push through this. Our, our city attorney, Melissa Manderscheid, is on vacation this week and she's kind of the resident expert. Not to take anything away from Mr. Zuniga here, I'm I'm sure you could, you'd lead us through ably, but we, I think we had talked earlier about perhaps holding off until Melissa was back again. And it will give us the opportunity under this category to talk about the public comment period, which I brought up last week or the last time, I think, as a possibility to to continue the discussion, to talk more about it, to talk about our public comment period. And I brought up a couple of things, a couple of concerns that I had and suggestions. I talking about how people were generally, I think hesitant to speak and it was it's a combination. I think it's a fear of speaking. I think people don't like to stand up in front of a group on camera and so on, but I think it's also a fear of harassment and or bullying that sometimes accompanies speaking. I talked about a desire to change the poor format that we've got in place right now to make it more of a conversation and less of a five-minute speech for folks to stand in front of us. Talked of concerns about a lot of the same groups and the same people and the same topics coming up, meeting after meeting and a concern about those groups not necessarily commenting to the council, but rather trying to to play to the cameras and to to talk and to spread their to make a speech to more of the community at large as opposed to bringing issues forward to the city council, which is why public comment was, I think, put together in the first place. And then also concerns about speeches by politicians. And we've seen in in just the past few years here. Candidates at all levels, local, county, state, federal level. Folks who have come forward and used the public comment period as an opportunity to give a five-minute campaign speech. The suggestions I made, we're talking about moving the public comment period to a time prior to the meetings and and out of the council chambers to make it more conversational and less of a speech. To use the opportunity to, even if we take it off offline, to be able to review or at least somehow bring forward some of the concerns that were brought forward by folks. And and I also threw out the the possibility of taking time to address things that are not necessarily on the agenda, give people an opportunity to talk to that. I know there were a couple of responses to that at our last meeting. So that is what I had brought up, kind of teeing things up and kicking things off. And Mr. Verbrugge, I think. Do you have anything to add to it? Or what I would like to do this evening is just kind of have this this conversation among the council. This is our rules of of procedure and this part of it, the public comment. Are are what we as a council see to be the most appropriate way to to handle our business and to to handle the meetings that we do have this in these chambers and and on behalf of the citizens and the residents of Bloomington. So, Mr. Verbrugge, anything to add or should we dive right in or?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the you provide an excellent overview, Mr. Mayor. And the the thing that I wanted to just remind people of the, you know, members of the public who may be watching this is the the city is required to have its meetings be open to the public and and the open meeting laws is well established and well understood. And in our own rules of procedure, the public comment period is established for the purpose of residents to address issues with the city council on business items that aren't on the agenda. The thing that that I want to make clear is that the I I think it is the responsibility of a city council to provide opportunities for residents to speak directly to the group as a body. And I think that most city councils believe that and have established a public comment or visitors to be heard or however they describe it in in the way that they do business. So I think you have that responsibility. I don't think that you have an obligation to provide a platform to your point, Mr. Mayor, that you know, the purpose of public comment is for people to address issues to the city council. And I I think the, you know, the changes that we made a few years ago in terms of providing responses back to folks. I think was intended to address what I would say was a shortcoming of the way that public comment was working a number of years ago, where it had gotten to the point where it was just a lot of speaking and then there wasn't a lot of feedback or or reporting back to people who were addressing the council at times. So we wanted to make sure that we were doing that. But to your point, there wasn't much of a conversation going on. And I think the real value of of the council having an opportunity to speak directly with residents who have concerns is the ability to have a conversation. You know, I know there's some questions about, well, how do other cities do this? And we can provide you the information about how other cities do this, but the the real answer is each city does this in the way that works best for each city. And, you know, what what their council wants to try to accomplish and the relationship they want to have with their community. If I were to identify a a shortcoming with the way that we have it now is that the rules of procedure set a very specific time. But because of our agenda construction, it's it's not often the case that public comment occurs within the time that's in the rules of procedure. So either way, we've got to address public comment within the rules of procedure to deal with that. I I think it's it's not welcoming to people to not know the time when they will be provided an opportunity to speak to the council. So this evening was a good example that it was something on the order of about five after eight or so before the public comment period opened. Some nights it's seven thirty, sometimes it's eight thirty. And if you're somebody who has an issue that you want to address to the city council, I think it's it's better from the council's perspective to have some predictability for residents about when they can expect to do that. So that can be accomplished either through restructuring our agenda or setting a specific time outside of the council meeting to do that. Those and and that seems to me, if you're going to set up something that's user friendly for residents who wish to address the council, the very first thing you can do is say, there's a very specific time at which we're going to do this. But in terms of the rest of the council conversation, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, rather than trying to amend language that's in the rules of procedure, I think what staff is really hoping for from this conversation is some direction on what you might like to do differently. And then staff can come back and put a proposal together after that for you to consider based on the conversation here. And then we can incorporate that as necessary going forward. So we don't necessarily have to come up with language to amend the rules of procedure. This is really more of a a discussion to give some ideas and some direction to staff to put together a proposal to bring back.
Very good. Thank you. So council? Thoughts on this? Councilmember Beloga, why don't you lead us off?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I jotted down your items and I have four of them. I'm going to start them at verse because I think that the last one, speeches by politicians, is the easiest one. And we should just eliminate that. And I think it can be done very easily just by between the council and the mayor being alert to that and turning those off. The replication of comments. We do have a provision in the current rules of procedure that says that a person who has addressed an issue previously does not need to be heard again on that same issue. So if it's new information. And again, it's bringing that to the chair's attention that this person has spoke on this item at prior meetings. There's no new information being presented and then we can move on to the next speaker. The change of format. I I favor the current one with a modification. And that is to the amount of time. I think five minutes is an excessive amount of time. Because it leads to a lot of rambling and unstructured comments that aren't useful for either the general public or the council to hear. But I think the real item of importance with the current format is is that the information that a speaker does have to share is shared with council and the rest of the public. Lastly, is the persons who are hesitant to speak and I have no suggestions on how to remedy that. It's been one that I've observed through the years. I think we all have. And I think some people are just hesitant to do that because of the environment, because of the group they're addressing, because they're unfamiliar with public speaking, et cetera, et cetera, whatever the case may be. So I don't think we'll ever find a way to overcome that.
Thank you, Councilmember Beloga. Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I appreciate you pressing so hard on this. You know, certainly I have would like to look at this, but just looking at this, you know, Mayor. In in terms of this particular topic, one of the questions that I ask myself as a council member is do we need one way to do public comment? Is there something to be said about the idea that we have diverse groups of people across the city? And that we might not look at this particular process that we follow here today. And one, you know, as as Councilmember Beloga has put forward, look to modify it, but also look to explore other ways of doing public comment that allow us to be, as you have said, to be more engaging. And so I think that the thing that I would suggest to the council and to you, Mayor specifically, is does it make sense for us to 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 try to 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 do a trial basis of some of these ideas and and get some feedback from our community to see if we've really kind of hit the mark in terms of what makes sense. I mean, I really would like to to do a trial run of kind of what they do. You know, and eager to see what type of progression that we know, what what do we get out of that? What, you know, how many folks show up for that? You know, are we getting different folks to show up? And, you know, is there a way to modify our current process? And there are other other particular ways in which that we can try to do public comment. You know, I I just one of the things that I keep hearing from a feedback standpoint is that when you have folks kind of come to the council and kind of repeat things over and over again, that we're not communicating with folks, you know, and 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 so I I think that kind of begs us to try to do something different. And so so one, do we need one way of doing public comment? Can we explore diverse ways of doing public comment? And two, does it make sense to to do a trial basis of some of these other ideas to see, you know, if the engagement in these new processes work? And have a dialogue with our community about this process. It's very important, I think, to have that dialogue. When we talk about transparency and 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 openness, you know, I'd like to see what what the public thinks about these ideas. So those are some of my thoughts in regards to this public comment discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Coulter and then Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I I spent no small amount of time thinking about this over the last week or so. And you know, I would, I would say that our public comment period has gone off the rails. You know, it exists for folks to raise issues with the city council, the people who were elected to serve this community. It's not a forum for anyone to broadcast whatever they want over the airwaves and be granted the legitimacy of a city council meeting. It's not an opportunity for political candidates to use it as a public platform to push their candidacies. And it's most certainly not an open mic night to make insulting personal comments about city staff and council members. And I I think we do have to do something differently. That being said, the the idea of taking it off camera, of moving it out of the regular meeting is not a step I'm ready to take yet. Even beyond transparency, my concern is about accessibility. Personally, I have always tried to be as accessible as possible as a council member. And with COVID already, directly engaging with other folks is challenging enough. And making those opportunities less accessible is just not something I'm keen, I'm keen on doing. I think we have seen in our public comment periods compelling reasons to make changes. But I think this is just too big of a first step for me. I would say that if things continue on the path that they've been on, I might get there, but that I'm just not there yet. And I I the other concern I have, and I want to be clear that it's not a concern with with our current mayor or any current council members. But my concern is that if we move this move public comment period off camera, that a less scrupulous mayor and council could manipulate that more kind of private arrangement in in undemocratic ways. So what I have thought about and what I what I would like to do tonight is just sort of propose some some rules for public comment that I have come up with. These are strictly my own creation. And I will most assuredly be relying on our legal staff to perfect the language. on our legal staff to uh perfect the language. Um, but I see these as as sort of guardrails to ensure that public comment meets its purpose and that folks who that everyone who wants to is able to participate without intimidation. Uh, and these are all ideas that are based on standard practices found in Robert's Rules, in our own rules of procedure, and sometimes both. Uh, these are not in any particular order other than the one that I thought of them in. Um, so first, commenters shall not personally attack, impugn, or question motives or otherwise reference personalities of council, city staff, or other commenters of member or members of the public. I don't think anyone thinks that personal insults and attacks represent civilized debate and discussion, and I I just don't think they belong in council meetings, period. Uh, second, commenters, and this is, I think this gets to something that that councilmember Beloga just referenced as well, uh, commenters shall not reference political campaigns or candidates. You know, we've all been a candidate at one point. Uh, campaigns are an important part of our democratic process, but there is a time and place for discussions about political campaigns, and a city council meeting is not it. Um, third, again, to what what councilmember Beloga mentioned, commenters shall not ask previously answered questions. I think clarification is one thing, but asking a question again simply because you don't like the first answer advances nothing. Uh, fourth, if a comment is made that the presiding officer knows to be factually false, the presiding officer may correct the commenter at that time. Uh, and then fifth, comments shall be kept to a single subject. Uh, this is akin to sort of in that the a principle of of council debate that, you know, we we debate the subject that's in front of us, not what whatever else we might want to talk about at that time. And I would say that there are more appropriate and frankly, better ways of addressing a series of issues uh than bringing forward sort of a laundry list at a council meeting. Um, so for me, right now, I think the better way forward is to rein in some of the excesses, some of the inappropriate behaviors that we've seen, uh, and allow us an opportunity to sort of appeal to the the better angels of our nature. Um, I think we all, council, staff, and the public play a part in in lifting up the debate and encouraging a a positive and productive community conversation. Um, and I'd much rather try doing that before we make any more drastic changes. So those are just my my thoughts.
Thank you, councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick thoughts for this. Um, uh, first, I agree with the political speeches and things like that. Our current rules do um limit the commenters to matters that the council has control over and things like that. So asking our opinion on terrorist groups isn't really uh appropriate or helpful, but I have seen public comment used very well. Um, uh, we had a gentleman who brought forth information with regards to RVs and other uh places uh in the region that were doing different things, and I think that uh helped staff get some additional information to the council, and it actually moved the needle on that issue. And uh, um, you know, so people have used it very well. I think it's an important forum for people. Um, I did a little research on what some other cities are doing in terms of kind of controlling their message, and I think one of the things that we have is that it's you can't comment on something that's on the agenda. Um, other cities go a little bit further and say that uh it you can't comment on something that's on a future agenda or in current application. I think the principle there is that there will be a public hearing at some point and try to save up all those comments for those. The flip side of that is it's sometimes nice to have a little bit of a heads up that there might be a question or concern about something that's coming down um i- in the future. So, you know, I don't know, uh, my mind's not made up on that. Just want to point out that other cities do it differently. Um, to some of the the ideas like councilmember Loman said, maybe try doing something a little bit different, similar to Egan and their um ability to meet with the council prior to the meeting and have more of a conversation. Uh, one of the questions in my mind is is would we be able to do that in a way that was recorded? So people could still see it, still see the conversation, but it it wouldn't necessarily be part of the meeting. It would be and it would be more conversational. Still would try to avoid the the concerns that councilmember Coulter raised there. Um, the other thing I'm interested in is the ability to make it easier for those people that do uh have a little stage fright and or may have reasons they can't come to a meeting on a Monday night at seven o'clock due to um, you know, maybe their age, maybe they they, you know, travel is difficult for them, or they have children or something like that. And, you know, we've been using because of the situation, the phone, and people can call in. Um, I'd like to see consideration of continuing to allow that to make it even more accessible that people could call in to whatever format we have. Um, allowing people to submit through an online forum or an email, a short, brief comment that maybe somebody could read uh for them if that was uh their preference. Um, you know, there are probably other things we could do to assist those members of our community, that uh English isn't their first language, maybe isn't their best language, and be able to communicate that information to us about their concerns. I think right now that's a real barrier for some in our community. Um, and so trying to find ways to assist with that. So um, I I'm generally in favor of of trying to clean this up and make it more um focused on the business that we do as a city and allowing people to have that input and allowing people to get answers to their questions. And and I do think avoiding the political speeches, the posturing, the personal attacks um is absolutely appropriate, and and finding a way to do that is important.
Thank you, councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Martin?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor, uh, and also want to echo my appreciation for having some time to to talk about this. I uh a- as my fellow councilmember knows and folks that have tuned into meetings towards the start of the year, uh, transparency and engagement and kind of enshrining that as top priority is something I've been uh pretty passionate about, uh, and I think is important. Uh, and in my understanding, the way public comment was initially envisioned, it furthered both of those aims. A terrific opportunity for folks to be able to weigh in on policy that's on the horizon or that we hadn't thought of yet. I think it's just a a stronger way to show kind of the way we formulate policy and show folks how they can engage in helping us get to a good outcome. But uh, without repeating uh all the points that have been said, the public comment period we have now just isn't that uh in terms of of transparency and showing how we work on things. Staff has met with, we've all replied to emails, we've asked these questions that come back to us every single week again and again and again, and they're back here before us because a lot of times those folks aren't here to talk to us, they're here to talk to the cameras. Uh, a- and on the engagement front, in the past eighteen years or eighteen months or so, it's really seemed like the engagement capacity of public comment is about seven people. Uh, and granted, they have every right to express their opinion and participate, but uh if that is choking out other participation for fear of bullying uh or or running uh counter to to kind of a clicker group, that's no good either. So I I want to thank my colleagues and and offer um kind of seconds to some of these points. Uh, I think the enforcement on the prohibition of individuals repeating uh speaking turns on items over time, while that might be awkward to enforce, I appreciate councilmember Beloga's point that we technically have that capacity now. Uh, and e- encouraging basic decorum. Uh, I was going to leave that a general example, but I think tonight uh and how uh it was accused that none of us have integrity is a perfect example of what's wrong right now with public comment. Uh, so I appreciate councilmember Coulter bringing that up. Uh, and just generally providing that variety of avenues for folks to get involved, uh, both by having kind of the fixed time period for folks on variable schedules, uh, but also, while I'm hesitant to eliminate the on-camera completely, adding an off-camera component ahead of time for folks that aren't comfortable uh kind of being the stars on BTV uh or having the variety of submission options uh that councilmember Nelson raised, I really appreciate as well. Uh, I also think it'd be interesting uh to make sure that our public comment period or periods, whatever they are, are ahead of consent agenda, and there's some kind of way for a resident to indicate uh if there's an item that they want to speak to generally. Doesn't necessarily mean that it would get pulled, uh, but just in case, say, there's a point, I say if there was an item related to RVs on consent, and there was something we hadn't considered, and the resident wanted to say, hey, have you thought about this? Uh, I think that's good input to get as well. Uh, yeah, uh, so I just, in general, I I appreciate that we're having this conversation. I think we can get public comment back to a realm where it's a tool for both uh transparency, engaging our residents, and moving the city forward. Uh, I will say it's a little bit disappointing that we have to set all these guardrails to have a productive uh conversation, but uh we'll do what it takes. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Carter?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will try to keep my comments um brief since uh I think everybody else has spoken, and I agree with a lot of what's been said. Um, you know, I just, I often ask myself, you know, is there a better way to do things? And I, you know, as everybody has articulated, the public comment period um in our, the way that we have it structured, um, there is so much opportunity for improvement um for all of the reasons that have been stated already. You know, for me personally, you know, the one putting everything aside of what people are saying during public comment, um, you know, I just don't think it's eh very accessible. Uh, during normal non-pandemic times, the fact that people have to show up to the chamber, they have to sit for who knows how long before public comment period. Um, as councilmember Nelson mentioned, you know, it could be that people work during that time, they have kids, uh, they uh aren't able to physically get there. There are a variety of reasons. And so, you know, I would really like to see us look at ways that it can be more accessible, but also more inclusive and welcoming. And the other thing, um, you know, I would really encourage us to start thinking, and I don't know if this is maybe um legal in partnership with COED, I don't know, but thinking about different models that we could pilot to really have a more engaging and inclusive process because, I mean, community engagement, our public comment period is not public engagement like that. It's not community engagement because community engagement is about building relationships, collaborating, working toward a common good, coming together, compromising, figure out figuring out solutions to some of the challenges that we're facing, and that is not what's happening during public comment. And so if that is kind of the ultimate goal for this to be an engaging process, we have to do something different. Um, and I mean to the transparency piece, uh, we have open meeting laws for a reason. Um, and I think that by having better community engagement, um, taking the time needed to build trust, um, that we will get there um in terms of, you know, making sure that people feel like um they can really, you know, trust the council on the city. Um, so so with that said, um, you know, I'm very supportive of looking at different ways. I'm also very supportive of, um, you know, changing up pub public comment right now so that we can have some more guardrails, um, and then testing some different options where, you know, that we may consider uh moving forward with permanently in the future.
Thank you, councilmember Carter. Councilmember Nelson, did your hand go back up or was it left up from the prior time?
I put it back up, Mayor.
Very good. Councilmember Nelson?
Good, thank you. Um, I just wanted to follow up on a couple of things um to councilmember Beloga's point about the timeframe. I think we had four commenters today or this evening, um, and they took a little less than ten minutes, so a little over two, two and a half minutes apiece. I I do think that's an opportunity that we could cut down. I think they were all uh fairly succinct in that. Um, you know, I would say that we had three people that spoke to issues that I think are, you know, fair questions regarding uh public or racism as a public health emergency, uh, an FBI investigation, and if we have any updates for the community, um, and uh safety issue. And that those are types of things I've seen brought forth before, and um all seem like very, you know, you know, reasonable things to ask at a council meeting and try to get some information on the community. Um, so I see that as 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 a positive thing. Um, I'd also like to um to say I support councilmember um uh Martin's idea of moving it up if we have a period where people during the council meeting can speak, which it sounded like generally with some modifications there was support for, that we move that up possibly even to before approval of the agenda. And then I did like the idea of allowing um comment on consent items if um if necessary within the reasonable time limits there. Uh, just if someone wants to ask if we pull something off to discuss it further or share a bit of information that they have specific to it. Uh, I've always found that sometimes it's a a a bit problematic that the public comment comes after that, and people don't have a chance to to weigh in if they see something that maybe we could benefit from their thought process on. So, um, those were my follow-up comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to back in? Additional comments or reaction to anything anyone else has said?
Well, I would say, thank you. I think this is uh, there there's a lot of good suggestions there, a lot of good possibilities. Um, it um, it gives us a path, I think, forward to have staff put together some possible changes, some possible new guardrails that we have been talking about, or or um a different way of doing things. And it will give us an opportunity, I think, to to do it not only uh differently, but better. And um, I I understand if uh folks didn't necessarily want to go to the nuclear option, like I was pushing uh to to take it off camera, to to get it to a different spot, to get it beforehand. I appreciate that. Um, but I I I'm glad we were able to have the discussion and and start to consider what else we could do and what what we could do better. And I think one of the things that um I I appreciate also is the acknowledgement that everybody uh has has stated that we do need to do it better. We need to do it differently, and we need to do it better. There's plenty of room for improvement in this, and um how we improvement, how we improve it, I think, is up to us, and and uh we can work with staff. And for that matter, I I think it will be worthwhile to get some public input as to the best ways to do public input. Wha- what would be the best way to do it? I like the idea of a uh of a call-in option even when we're out of COVID. I like the idea of giving people different uh possibilities, setting having a set time. And um, there there has got to be a way, I don't know if it's through maybe one of our poll call uh tools or something along those lines, people's other suggestions about ways we can do this better, ways we can make it more effective and more accessible to to the folks who do want to speak up and speak to us. So, Mr. Verbrugge, do you have, folks have enough to work on there?
I think we do, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we'll put together a couple of uh ideas about some changes that we can make and uh bring them back for some subsequent discussion. I think the question for the council is, you know, what's the what's the timeline? We haven't uh had a conversation about when we're likely to return to uh in-person meetings here in the council chambers. And so, you know, some of this uh, you know, may be time to occur when we come back to something that is maybe more uh normal. I don't know what normal is anymore. Um, you know, I, since you mentioned it just in your last comments, though, uh, continuing to have call-in options, I think, you know, one of the one of the things that we've learned during the last four months, and it's not just Bloomington, but I think many businesses, many local governments have learned, is that um, the, you know, the virtual participation is um something that people, I think, are learning how to get comfortable with. And there there's certainly an opportunity to continue doing that in some sort of uh forward-moving fashion, even when we do come back to in-person, uh, is not to say that we can't continue to have call-in opportunities. To the point that a couple of council members have made, uh, having to get yourself up to Civic Plaza to at an appointed day and an appointed time to then sit through portions of meeting is is maybe a barrier to participation, right? So uh, if we continue to allow other ways for people uh to participate, it probably uh serves a like, I think, a higher purpose than just saying, okay, pandemic's done, we're back, and everybody has to come back to City Hall. I I don't know if that works for everybody. People have transportation issues, they have childcare issues, they have employment issues, um, that, you know, they're they don't work on our schedule. So um, I I think the comments are well received that we need to find ways to engage people. The other thing I'd say about public comment is that these rules of procedure, uh, I won't say they're antiquated, uh, but they're a little bit long in the tooth in that um th- they were written in an era when we didn't have email, and we didn't have uh social media, and we didn't have websites, right? There is a multitude of avenues for people to provide input to the city council, either to councilmembers individually or the council as a whole, uh, that uh people do take advantage of those opportunities. The the public comment period at a city council meeting is not the sole um uh venue for people to provide input, and I think we have to remember that, Mr. Mayor.
I would agree. I would agree. Council, anything else to add? Any last thoughts? Any grand ideas that popped into your head that you want to add?
If not, I'd I'd look forward to the staff coming back with some ideas and recommendations, and I um look forward as we continue to plow through these rules of procedure, because I think um as we as we work our way through them, I think we we are realizing that they are perhaps a bit long in the tooth, and maybe it's time to to update or look at them in some different ways. And this might be a good opportunity to uh to do that. And I do think the the pandemic and the realities of it, I think- and the realities of it, I think, might give us some good ideas about ways to do things better and more effectively. And it's just kind of the reality of what's come out of what has been the reality. So it could be useful. Very good. We'll move on to item 9.3, our city council policy and issue update. Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I have nothing new for you this evening.
Nothing from Mr. Verbrugge? Council, anything to add? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much. I am not sure timing around when we could practically implement this, but just to pick up a thread that we had discussed briefly earlier in the spring, we had talked about doing kind of a mentorship program with city staff and local youth in the community. And it just kind of rung a memory bell with me, considering that our African-American community outreach sessions had also brought up this idea of how are we kind of mentoring our youth in the community. So just kind of as a reminder to keep that on the radar and especially maybe later in the year, hopefully when things are calming down, I would love to continue this idea of alignment with maybe discussions with the school district in Normandale, identifying kids when they're freshmen, maybe sophomores, and connecting them with city staff that could introduce them to some of these really in-demand career fields, whether that's trades, inspections, IT, and then see if potentially maybe we could hire some of these folks and keep them in our community long-term. So that's a big discussion. I know staff and council's attention is stretched thin right now, but I just wanted to lob it out there and hopefully we can maybe pick it up in the fall or early next year.
Thank you, Councilmember Martin. Agreed. I think it would be, the reasons we talked about it, I think, were good in terms of trying to introduce young people to possible careers or different things going on at City Hall. And if only we had a connection to apprenticeship training in Minnesota in some way that we could look at. So, Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Lohman?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, as we're all aware, the school board is meeting or had a meeting this evening, wasn't able to watch it because I was here. But they're making some big decisions that'll impact our community, and I don't expect answers right now, but I know we worked in close partnership with them to help with food for kids that may have gone without because they maybe get a meal at school. There's going to be some childcare issues and things like that based on what the school district is working on. And I just add, the reasonable time, if we could get an update on what the city is doing to help them address those issues within our community, I'd appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Lohman?
I couldn't pass up the opportunity to say to Patrick that I had the opportunity to be an intern in the planning department with the city of Bloomington. And so I think that your thought is welcome in that. I think it's a good idea that we encourage young folks to take on mentorships, wherever they be, or apprenticeships. And certainly for me, it was a great opportunity to, you know, learn country western music as I wrote down land use coding across the city of Bloomington. So I like that idea. On a more serious note, one question I do have there, I don't necessarily look for an answer right now, but, you know, when we look at our agenda in terms, and I brought this up earlier, there are some questions that I am getting from folks in the community around, how does the public hearing operate and work? What do we put on there? What, you know, how does that work? And so, you know, we're kind of going through right now as, you know, as a, you know, as a, you know, group, we're kind of going through and we're modifying our rules of procedures and that kind of thing. And it might just make some sense to kind of have a, you know, you know, here's, you know, because I mean, the manager talked about it, you know, how do you feel welcome, you know, in a community when you don't necessarily know the rules and that kind of thing? And so as we look at, you know, how does the construction of this agenda work and operate? Now, how do I put my concerns and get them before the council? And when can I expect to kind of see that information? We've had a couple of occasions where folks were confused, even myself, I've been confused too, as to, you know, what to tell folks. And so I just, you know, I'm not necessarily looking for the answer now, but just kind of long-term as we shift, we're not the same council we've been in the past, you know, we're shifting and we're changing. And I think it makes some sense to let folks know kind of, you know, where things land and how does it get there and how does it make sense? So.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Lohman, just the real, real quick response, and then we can provide some staff follow-up as well. For those who are watching and may share the question or maybe prompted the question that Councilmember Lohman had, you know, there are certain areas where we are required to have public hearings, our planning activities, land use issues, property issues. We have a required process for public hearings. We're often required to have public hearings related to city fees or other financial matters. And then we're required to have public hearings for things like liquor licenses, right? So we have different standards for different public hearing processes. I think what would be helpful is for especially our planning staff to maybe delineate what types of actions occur, be either with the Planning Commission or with the city council, where the public hearings tend to be scheduled, depending on the nature of the action being considered. I think what's really important to note, though, is that all of our public hearings, no matter what they pertain to, are always published on our website and in our paper of record. And so the public hearing time and date and location is always specified. So if there is something that is heard by the Planning Commission as the public hearing, there may not be a public hearing at the city council, but the public hearing did occur and was properly noticed. And if there's something that we can do to improve people's awareness of where those public hearings are publicized, we're certainly open to those suggestions. So we'll pull together some additional information, council.
And yes, Councilmember Lohman, I'd agree, your knowledge and appreciation of country music has served you well. I will agree with that. Councilmember Beloga and then Councilmember Carter?
Just to tag on to Councilmember Lohman's comments on public hearings, historically, the Planning Commission has public hearing for any application, has always done that. And up until recently, the city council did also. So I think what Councilmember Lohman's point is, not trying to put words in your mouth, is how do we distinguish the difference between when there will be an item heard by planning and not by the city council? So that is very clear to all of the city council members and the public, maybe more importantly than the public. Again, no need to answer that now, but I appreciate that idea in the future because like Councilmember Lohman, I have had some confusion on that in the past couple of meetings and gave out some inaccurate information.
Agreed. And we'll get information on that, I hope. And because, yes, I think, I know that you're right, Councilmember Beloga, that the change was made within the past couple of years, I think, in an effort to streamline our operations, what we took up as a council as opposed to what was approved by the Planning Commission, the different powers that we gave them. So, but some clarification on that would be helpful. Councilmember Carter?
Mayor, I just have one quick thing that I'd like to bring up, and that is related to food trucks. So I have had a couple of people reach out wondering kind of where we are at in that process and when we will be moving forward with that vote. And so I just wanted to get a quick update on that timeline. I don't think I saw it on the upcoming kind of draft agendas, and so wanted to touch base on that.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, you're correct, that one not, it didn't get buried, but it did get backburnered when a couple months ago. We anticipated that there wasn't going to be a lot of demand for food trucks because of the pandemic and the issues that were being experienced by other food service providers within our community, that the timing wasn't quite right to bring that forward. I'll check in with our planning staff, see if they have a date specific or if they're just waiting until later this year. But certainly would appreciate any input from the council in terms of the time that you'd like to see that come back. We'll follow up in our weekly report.
Thank you. Councilmember Beloga, another comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regards to food trucks, I recall that item quite vividly that with the stress that our fixed restaurateurs were under during the shutdown, that we intentionally delayed that. And I don't think that an awful lot of that stress has been removed from them financially. So I would ask that when we do schedule that item, we do have that subject in mind because I, my sympathies are higher with our current restaurateurs with fixed operations and high overheads than food trucks with low cost of entry and not a history in our city. So not to say that that's not an important issue, but I would just like to see the general wellness of our restaurants improve financially before we go forward with that.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, thank you for the reminder, Councilmember Beloga, and I'm totally comfortable with that. And I'm just wondering if we, I mean, I'm happy to communicate that back to the residents who have asked, but maybe we provide some kind of update on our website or something. I don't know. I have had several people asking because I think the state, or state fair food vendors were doing, they were traveling all around the metro and like, there's been a lot of kind of social media posts and excitement around food trucks coming to different places. And so that's probably what's spurring some of the questions that I'm being asked. But it's helpful to have that memory jogger. And so I'm happy to just individually respond to those people, but providing some clarity somewhere would be great, too.
Council, anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Councilmember Lohman.
Second, Martin?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Hearing no further discussion. Ms. Christensen?
Thank you. Beloga?
Aye.
Mayor Bossy?
Aye.
Carter?
Aye.
Coulter?
Aye.
Lohman?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thanks for the staff, for the work you've done for this meeting this evening. Thank you much. Councilmembers, good job. We will see you again next week. Have a good week.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.